And the time is almost nine AM. Welcome to today's workshop. Today we'll be discussing a budget update, which is scheduled for ninety minutes. And then a refresh of the request for qualifications, which is scheduled for a half hour. Followed by good in the order. Welcome everyone. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Atkins.
All right, thank you, Madam Fisher. And I appreciate the flexibility of our board members being able to schedule this workshop. It's a very important workshop. Want to make sure that you had information relative to the budget prior to approval of the tentative budget. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Decimours. And she will take us through the presentation, take us through the presentations.
Thank you. Good morning, Dr. Decimour.
Good morning, Dr. Decimour.
All right, good morning, Ms. Fisher, members of the board and Dr. Atkins. Can you all hear us okay? Yes, okay, all right, very, very good. All right, we're here with you this morning. This has been a very different budget year, to say the least, along with everything else. And we are working on putting together all of the pieces of the puzzle. While we don't have all of the answers yet, we do have some additional information that we feel is very important to share with you today. The governor finally took action on the budget that he was presenting and our plans can begin to solidify. And this morning I have with me Kelly Letcher and Sarah Cox to share some information with you and talk about the next steps. So I'll turn it over to Kelly right now to share some of that information and then we'll continue to talk.
Good morning, everyone. So the good news is the governor signed the budget, which we have been waiting for for some time to see where we were going to end up. So now we know as of right now where we are. So the actual signing had little to no effect on the FFP program that we get our funding from. The teacher salary increases to the forty seven thousand five hundred stayed in the budget. So we can expect that to move forward. There was, he also approved the family empowerment scholarships. Last year they were capped at eighteen thousand, they moved that to twenty nine thousand this year. We do believe that is going to have an effect on our numbers because we did have a large number of students that applied for that last year. And we do believe that there will be another large number this year. So we will see an increase in that, which we did hold some reserves back for that so that we could cover that cost as well. There were no changes to student projections based on the COVID nineteen. They left those alone right now. And they're proposing to leave, hold everyone harmless. We'll see how that works out. What we can tell you is the budget will be changing. We expect that after the elections in November, that we will see some changes in the budget come through at that time. As new revenue estimates come in and there's some losses in revenue from the state, we do expect to see some reduction. So we're doing everything we can to hold back funding in order to make sure we can cover those losses as they come in. The next slide, please. So the governor did veto some bills. So the main thing that affected us that he vetoed was the school recognition and the lottery. So while that is a three point seven million dollar loss to us, it really doesn't affect the everyday operations of the budget. The school recognition were funds that were provided to the schools that received an A or went up a letter grade or maintained a two increased letter grade for the next year. They received funding, so and most of that was bonuses to the teachers and staff. And while that is a loss of a bonus for the teachers and staff, it really has no real effect on the budget itself as we are trying to plan for staff and things. And the lottery money that was included in that is the money that goes to our SAC committees to do some school improvement. I do believe that our schools have enough money in their school improvement funds right now to keep moving forward as of right now with whatever their needs are for that. The other thing was not a direct part of the FFP, but he vetoed the administrator's professional development grant. And that one is the one that we use to provide our initial training to our administrators, supplies and some travel as well. Title two is looking at maybe trying to help pick up some of those costs so that we can continue on with those programs that really help our district. The other part that doesn't really affect us right now, but we know there's been some conversations, is the guardian program. So they did, there was forty one point five million dollars that was not spent last year in the guardian program. That was supposed to be used for that program. And he did sign a veto to take that reappraisal away. So that forty one point five million is gone. However, in the budget for next year is five hundred thousand dollars to certify and train guardians. So that is still in the budget.
Turn it back over to Amy for a minute. Okay, so during the recent FADS seminar, we received some eye opening information regarding the state's budget. So on this slide, we talk about something, list for you some of the information that was talked about during that webinar. It is the case that if we just looked at the governor's vetoes, the billion dollars that Kelly just spoke of, and assumed that state budget losses were only encompassing the April and May revenue shortfalls, the budget could have balanced without those vetoes. But if you go to the next slide, given a more realistic scenario of what revenue shortfalls could be, if revenue shortfalls reported and projected for the last three months of the previous fiscal year continue into the new year, general revenue shortfalls would be, general revenue would be reduced by as much as seven point eight billion dollars. So just to reiterate that, in a realistic scenario, if we're looking at revenues generation continuing to fall in the two months of this fiscal year, the state general revenue shortfall could be as much as seven point eight billion. Now, when you compare that to the amount of vetoes that the governor just did at a billion dollars, you see that there's a big difference between the budget adjustment that's been made and the possible shortfalls. So as shortfalls continue to grow, we can expect that the state may move to reduce some reserves, but those reserves probably wouldn't be enough to cover the whole estimated general revenue shortfall loss. So if revenue collections continue to dwindle, what we should expect is a special session sometime during the year to address the budget, which means that we can expect mid-year budget cuts. So I want to make sure that we emphasize that because Kelly talked about the vetoes that were done and what impacted to the budget right now, which is primarily that school recognition and the lottery funds. But again, we don't believe that that's the end of the story. We believe that that's only the beginning of the story and that we can expect that throughout the year, more budget cuts will come through a possible special session addressing the budget because of continued general revenue shortfall at the state level. So our budget process has to try to account for that in terms of setting aside as much reserve as we possibly can to help mitigate whatever budget cut may come our way related to that special session cut. So if we move to the next slide, just wanted to give you the information related to tax rule. And I have Kelly that will give that. And then following, I have Sarah Cox, who will give some important detailed information related to the CARES Act.
Hello again. So we did get our preliminary numbers from the property appraisers. Our tax rule is increasing. At the first conference report, it was at ninety five point six billion. We are now at ninety six point five billion, which is a nine hundred and ten billion dollar increase. So while the required local effort, we still don't know what's going to happen there. Because as you know, when the tax rule goes up, they usually reduce our required local efforts so that we don't earn any more money that way. We will get some additional money in our discretionary mileage and in our capital outlet mileage. In our discretionary mileage, we're looking at about another six hundred and fifty three million dollars to come in, which is really nice to have. And in our capital, it's another one point three million dollars that we're anticipating to see based on the updated tax rule, which is a really good thing for us. Sorry, six hundred and fifty thousand, thank you, sorry about that. So I'm going to turn it over to Sarah right now to talk about the CARES Act.
Good morning, Dr. Atkins, school board members. Part of the FY twenty one budget will include the funding we're receiving through the CARES Act. To date, we've been notified of seven separate awards that totaled twenty six point three million dollars. The major award through the CARES Act is what we call ESTER, and that is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. We'll be receiving twenty one point eight million through that allocation. And when this money first was released, it was, the perception was out there for a lot of districts that the intent was to use it like Title One, so that our Title One schools would mainly benefit from this money. However, that is not the case. The state has just allocated it to us based on the percentage of Title One funds that we receive from their Title One allocation. So we are using these funds to support all schools. And through that, it includes charters and private schools who will receive approximately three point three million dollars. And the private schools in that amount alone is nine hundred thousand. And I point that out because we are responsible, we as the district are responsible to maintain control of those funds, which requires us to do the purchasing of goods and services on their behalf. So we have to evaluate some of the procurement processes, bids, contracts, et cetera, that we have in place in order to accommodate and it might have some impact and bring back increases to those items to the board. These funds can be used for a wide variety of activities. In a prior budget workshop, you were told that we were planning to use these dollars to cover some potential revenue gaps. That still is the plan. And while we may not know what that looks like until mid-year, the state has told us specifically that we cannot use these funds until we can prove that those revenue gaps have materialized. And then these funds will be available to us through September thirtieth of two thousand twenty two. Next slide, please. So another CARES Act is coming to us through the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. And one of those programs is summer recovery. This is a two million dollar grant that will be available to us through October thirty first of two thousand twenty. Charter schools and non-public schools also have access to these funds. As of right now, we have no private schools participating in this program. This money is to be used for summer learning and then as well as extended learning during the school year through October twenty twenty. So the state provided some additional guidance to us on this about two weeks ago, that in order for us to utilize these funds, seventy five percent of the time must be face-to-face interaction with students. So the minimum time requirement was eighty hours of instructional time, in which seventy five percent of that must be face-to-face. And another requirement for the summertime portion is transportation and meals must be provided. So we do have a two-week summer reading camp that started this week for seven schools that elected to participate. And then throughout the school year up until August thirty first, we will provide after-school tutoring or Saturday schools to six of our lowest three hundred elementary schools. Next slide, please. Another grant is coming to us through the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund is the building K to twelve CTE infrastructure. This is a two hundred and seventy nine thousand dollar allocation, which includes charter schools as well. There is a twenty five percent match required on this grant. And so the two hundred and seventy nine thousand amount that you see is seventy five percent of the program cost. The other five percent match, we have written into our ESTER allocation. The twenty five percent match, the state was very specific that we could not use any of our workforce dollars as the twenty five percent match. So of course, that led to some challenges as we're trying to develop the FY twenty one budget. So we felt it was best to include that match in our ESTER allocation. Next slide, please. Another grant coming through the Governor's Emergency Relief Fund is the rapid credentialing. This is specific to our post-secondary sites, so Fort Myers Tech, Cape Coral Tech, Public Service Academy. These funds are also available through September of two thousand twenty two. They also came with a twenty five percent match requirement. So the three hundred and sixty seven thousand that you see is seventy five percent of the program cost. The other twenty five percent is being written into the Higher Education Relief Fund that I'll address in a second. Next slide, please. Okay, and here is the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund, which we could call HERF. This is a million dollar allocation, again, specific to the post-secondary schools. Fort Myers is receiving just over five hundred thousand, as well as Coral. The Fort Myers Technical Allocation includes the Public Service Academy. To date, we have received four hundred and thirty two thousand of these funds, which was required to go to students in the form of emergency financial aid grants. The other portion of the funds are considered the institutional portion, in which the schools have discretionary to use how they would wish. Of course, you know, it has to be related to COVID and they are in the process of applying for those funds now. Next slide, please. And then last, we have the Office of Head Start, who is providing us supplemental funds in response to COVID. What period has not been determined yet, and we are in the midst of applying for these funds as well. And between our early, early, our Head Start, early Head Start grant is over seven hundred thousand. And then the Child Care Partnership Grant that we have, the supplement is sixty three thousand dollars. Do you all have any questions before I turn this over back to Amy?
Ms. Gittens? Yes, thank you. Thank you for these reports, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm kind of working backwards on the one you just mentioned about Head Start. Did you say that those are already, are in the process of being, you know, applied for?
Yes, ma'am.
We don't have those yet?
We do not. We do not have any of the funding yet. Most of the applications due this week.
Okay, so with the CARES Act money, we haven't received any of that either?
No, ma'am. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We did receive the student portion of the HERF dollars. That was the portion that was to go to students in the form of emergency financial aid grants. That is the only CARES Act dollars we have received to date.
Okay, and under the ESTER, is that what you call, how you pronounce it? Okay, under ESTER, I'll get there in one second. You mentioned that was, you said something about the allocation for Title One schools, but you decided to go ahead and give it to all schools because of something I didn't quite get that. And the question basically is, is there a percentage or a scale as to how much schools get? Because the reason I bring it up, with digital learning and all that's been going on with COVID, the achievement gap, especially in the Title One and the lower, you know, L two five schools, is going to have to have a lot more resources to bring those kids back up. So is there a sliding scale for schools to have a predominantly or a larger amount of the students to fall within that achievement gap? Does that?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. So the perception was when ESTER first was released, that it was for Title One schools. And that was not necessarily the case. DOE has allowed us to include all students in the formula. It's just the way we get the funds is kind of like Title One and the fact that, let's say, we in Lee County receive five percent of the state's total Title One allocation of the money from ESTER, we got five percent of that as well. So that's how the relation is to Title One. Now, could we have said, yes, we only want to serve economically disadvantaged students from this allocation? We definitely could have done that, which then would have also limited charter schools and private schools to only serve those students as well, because then we only would have included economically disadvantaged students in the count to come up per pupil amount. We chose not to do that because we recognize that there's learning gaps across all locations. And while there are specific items that we have written into the grant to help our L two five students, to put some additional resources towards Title One schools, the money is being spread for all schools to address the learning gaps. And even mental health is a big initiative in that.
And I understand that, and I'm not saying that it should just be one group. My thought was even a sliding scale kind of per capita to schools wherever in the district that have a higher percentage of those students that need resources. And rather than just equal across the board, because you may have one school that doesn't, that has five percent, L two fives, and another school has ninety percent, and they all get the same amount. That's my question.
Yeah, and so this money was not split up by school. I mean, while we had to do that for the charter and private schools so that they got their fair share, for the traditional public schools in our district, we did not develop a sliding scale or any type of allocation to go towards a specific school. As we in business services had met with academics there pretty much almost every day over the last couple of weeks. And so we just didn't think we would come up with a per pupil amount per school or a sliding scale allocation per school, because we wanted to target specific initiatives that may only benefit certain schools or benefit all schools.
Thank you very much. One more thought related to that, Ms. Gittens did want to make clear. Sarah just said that the CARES, it's not, so the allocation that we will receive, according to the plans with our experts in academic services, we did not plan to allocate those dollars out directly to schools like for Title One. This is not a recurring allocation. This is a one-time grant that we'll receive that we can utilize for the next two years. So the thought process behind that was, okay, let's develop, if we can, some district-wide initiatives that can be used to help all students across the district and also some areas that focus and concentrate on filling or being able to recover some of the learning gap that has happened throughout this time during COVID. And much of that is concentrated in students that are lower performing, such as the proposal to add thirty minutes to the day for some of our schools that need to recover the learning gap with a larger population of students that would need that. Addition of some reading coaches that would focus on covering the gap for students as well. So some district-wide initiatives, some grants and, you know, consulting contracts to help with, to focus on mental health and getting our students ready to come back and thrive into a different type of environment. So it was really more of trying to create in a very short period of time, because we had about two weeks to do this, district-wide initiatives that were able to help across the board, focus on the particular initiatives that the grants laid out, and also be able to do that in such a way that would not tie up those funds in recurring costs that we couldn't easily roll back if the fund, when the funds do go away. So hopefully.
And there are other, I gather, funding sources that are going to help those schools that do have a much higher level of need, resources for those students. Even testing, whatever we need to do to find out, did they drop? How far did they drop?
Yes, yes, now getting, absolutely. So getting into, you know, an area that certainly is not my area of expertise. So I know Dr. Spiro and his crew will have a lot to say about that. But one of the things that we have, that we have to kind of focus on throughout the year is being very flexible with what we need across the district, given our circumstances. So we built initially, we do hope a school, you know, allocation that is tiered to reflect the different needs of the different students at different schools. And then even beyond that, we don't know, as kids come back to the school environment, the types of issues that we're going to have to deal with. We certainly can anticipate and plan for some, but there's going to be some that come up that we just don't know about. So trying to make sure to create that flexibility within the budget to be able to quickly address those when they come up is something that we have really, you know, been trying to work on. So the more that we can conserve resources to be able to react flexibly, the better.
Thank you very much.
Are there any additional questions? Are there any additional questions?
Okay, uh, I have Ms. Gittens and Ms. Patrica. No, I'm sorry. I have Ms. Jordan and Mrs. Patrica with their blue hands raised. Thank you. Mrs. Jordan, you're first.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Um, I had Sarah, thank you. Um, my question was, I was looking at the, the GEAR and the HERF. So the one is for, it looks like they're both for vocational schools, correct?
Yes, one, one grant from the GEAR's portion is for the post-secondary, and that is the Rapid Credentialing Grant.
Okay.
And then.
And then, so and then the other, the HERF, that is for the students, and they themselves have to apply for those grants at the vocational? How do they receive those grants, I guess is my question?
Okay, so fifty percent of the HERF dollars was for, approximately fifty percent was for student financial aid grants. Those students did not have to apply for those funds. The technical centers had taken, um, as of a date, certain the students who, who were enrolled, and they split the allocation up between all of those students. So they pretty much received an equal award amount.
So it actually was not to, um, encourage or increase? These are people that have already been there, not to draw them in?
Correct.
I would think that they would try to get more people in, but, okay. And then my second question.
And I do want to say, you know, in, in response to that, um, part of the HERF, for even the Rapid Credentialing, there is guidance that we can use a portion of that money to pay for tuition, lab fees, et cetera, for new students coming in. So that, there is that possibility there for new students or even existing.
And the reason I was asking, because I had somebody, uh, call me to ask me if the schools were open, because they had tried to contact them. But given this information, that's something else that could be shared, you know, out as well. So I think that's a good thing. And then my second question would be, um, the tutoring and the Saturday schools, where is that information at? And where is that being, where is the tutoring and the Saturday schools being held at?
The, that will be held at six of our lowest three hundred schools. Um, I don't have that list right in front of me, but, um, so like Ray Potter, Colonial, Manchester, or, or three of them that I can think of off the top of my head. We can get that specific list to you.
That would be great.
And is very preliminary at this time. You know, the schools haven't even decided which option they want to go. We, we have, are literally just submitting this grant today. So, um, the schools will have the option in which program they want to do. Further information will be forthcoming to the schools and even district-wide about that.
Okay, so then, and then if you will to, you send out that information, could you, um, whoever has to send this out, Dr. Atkins, I'm not sure who. Um, if you could please, when we find out what those schools are, are other students um, able to utilize that, the tutoring or the Saturday school, if they do not go to those schools?
Okay, I will find that out.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, uh, Mrs. Patrica.
I just looked at the presentation. Mine are general questions that I can hold till the end.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I just have two quick questions. Uh, number one is, uh, can someone please, um, explain to the listening audience the Family Empowerment Scholarship? Uh, which is a, was at the beginning of the presentation. And then, Sarah, you mentioned something about funding for mental health, uh, issues. Can you expand on that just a little bit?
Yes, ma'am. So the plan in the grant is to hold, um, half-hour mental health sessions for any student who wants to participate at every school. So the opportunity will open up to anybody. Uh, it'll be half, half an hour or an hour session each week over the duration of the grant. So through FY twenty-two is the plan to hold these mental health sessions.
For any student who wants to participate?
Yes, ma'am, at any school.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
And I'll let Kelly answer your question about the Family Empowerment Scholarships.
Thank you so much.
Hello again. So the, um, as you all know, in the past, we've had the McKay Scholarship, which is for any, um, five oh four student or E S E student who wanted to attend a private school. There was a voucher provided to them to help cover their cost of tuition. In the FY twenty school year, the state came up with the Family Empowerment Scholarship, which did not have strings attached for any kind of, um, five oh four or I E P plan. It was basically any student, um, in the district, and it was, um, you applied for it and got it. It looked, they were basing it on mainly the lowest-income families, and they could apply for the scholarship to help cover the cost of private school tuition. Um, last year it was capped. Um, we had about two hundred and fifty of our students, um, that applied for it. The largest portion of those were students that were already in the private school. Um, and then they, um, applied for it to get the, their tuition paid, but they were already in the private schools. They were not coming from our schools. Um, and then this year, they're raising that cap. So we can expect to see some additional families that are, were already in the private schools that didn't get it the first year, apply again, and possibly fit for this next year.
Thank you very much. That was an important fact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, board members, any other questions? Okay, moving right along, um, Dr. Desmore?
Yes, awesome. So let's talk a little bit about school reopening and some of the impacts that, that, that might have. So if we go back to, um, the PowerPoint, and, uh, thank you. Uh, we felt like we really needed to go through in detail all the different parts of the CARES Act, because what, um, what we, what began as what we thought was going to be a very simple stimulus, um, type funding, um, really became a lot more complicated with a lot of different parts and pieces, um, and different, uh, qualifications and criteria attached to each one of those different little buckets of money. Each one of those is like its own grant, so the application had, had to be done for each of those. As they're, um, those are due today. So, as a lot of, most of them are due today. So there was, um, a lot of fast work in terms of putting together some options and plans that would help provide us some budget flexibility, but also take those funds for the purpose in which they were intended and create some programs that would really enhance, um, the experience that our students are going to have coming back into our physical buildings after such a long time away. Um, so we're hoping that we'll be able to accomplish that as we solidify, um, the plans for each of those. As I believe Ms. Jordan mentioned, we'll be coming back to you with the details, uh, related to exactly how those programs, um, will be, uh, will be conducted throughout the schools. There are still some questions to be answered related to that. Um, and first and foremost, you know, first things first, we have to, uh, make sure that we are in line and ready for the reopening of schools. So in terms of that reopening plan and kids coming back into the physical building, there are various things related to that that could have a significant impact on the budget. So we wanted to talk about two of those. Um, first of all, in terms of staffing. Depending on, um, how, what medium of how education is, is given to each student, whether it be virtual, whether it be through Lee Home Connect, or whether it be in the physical building, and the ability of how a student may move through all of those throughout, um, the, the year. And also dependent on what circumstances may happen as, um, classrooms or locations uh, may be, um, offline or shut down throughout the year, dependent on the circumstances. Our ability to be flexible with our staffing is paramount and important. And what will happen, um, with that staffing and related, could, could have a significant impact on the budget as we have to consider, well, what happens if there's a period of time, um, where certain, um, personnel may not be able to work because of how, um, you know, a, a location being shut down? Or what's the ratio of kids that will be choosing, uh, virtual or the home connect versus physical in-person education? And what impact is that to students? Say that we have to transport at schools, that we have to feed at schools? So all of those questions are still, um, to be answered. And as we get additional information, um, from our parents, from our community, and, um, solidify that reopening plan, then in turn, we have to react in the budget as to how that staffing will be lined up, um, for each individual location and at district locations, given, um, the demand of a particular, uh, mode of education. Then we have the personal protective measures, um, that we need to provide as part of the school reopening plan. You all, um, of course, we had the, the workshop where we talked in-depth about some of what those measures would be. Um, but just for example, uh, masks that will be needed to, that will need to be provided both in buses and at school and, uh, department locations. Uh, hand sanitizer and the dispenser for those, uh, social distancing signs, uh, mask for employees as well. I think I mentioned students, but mask for employees as well. Um, face shields for employees. All of those items, um, based on the estimates that we've done right now, we could be, um, looking at somewhere between ten and fifteen million dollars, um, for the year for those protective measures for students and staff. So we need to, now, some of those costs, uh, may be reimbursable through FEMA. And so we have done the preliminary, um, request for public assistance for that. But many locations in, in, in every state will as well. So the availability of funding for that is really yet to be seen or known. Uh, at this point, we have to plan in our budget as though this is our expense and that's what's going to be happening. So that is, uh, a detail that is, has a significant impact and we needed to make sure to talk about. Um, equipment, so for our virtual students, depending on, um, the plan and how we have to, uh, conduct that out, if there is a need for additional equipment, such as Chromebooks and hotspots, we will, of course, as a district, be planning and providing for that as we did, um, in March and through the, the rest of last, uh, school year. And then our response measures, when we get a, uh, positive case in any school or location and have to go and do the, the deep clean, the fogging of that location in order to, uh, make it safe for students and staff to return. Each time we do that, that is a cost of between five and six thousand dollars. Um, based on what's happening, you can, it's easy to see how that cost could be significant to the budget, um, depending on how many of those circumstances we have or we have to go in and respond measures at any individual location, school, or work location. Uh, I will pause to see if there are any questions related to that, because that, that's a, that's a big one.
Board members, I'm looking for the blue hands. Uh, Ms. Gittens?
Sorry, thank you, Ms. Fisher. I couldn't find my blue hand fast enough. Uh, the question is about the deep cleaning that you mentioned about, and, and this may not be an, an answer that you can do, but ha- has there been a decision made that, um, for example, uh, one classroom, you have one student that is positive or the teacher or whatever? Do, what is, the questions I've been asked is, um, do we close down for quarantine for all of them, or do we quarantine just that classroom? Or do we just clean and they come back, uh, you know, the next day? Because if we're looking at, uh, common areas like the hallway and the cafeteria with a positive case, that creates a major issue. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, yes. So not wanting to, uh, step outside of my purview, but I think what I can say is that we do have, um, additional meetings coming up throughout the rest of this week to really talk through that process and document completely, um, what happens, what is the response in any of the given situations that you just talked about, Ms. Gittens, to determine what is the, um, what's, what's the pervasiveness of the case? And in response to the case, what needs to happen? A shutdown of a classroom, a shutdown of a school? And so I think that we are working through those scenarios right now, and we'll have a more complete update for the board and the schools related to that, um, very soon. But I look to my colleague for just a moment, Dr. Spiro, to make sure that I've answered that correctly.
And while he's, while he's, you know, nodding or coming up, I just want to, to say on record and to the superintendent, I, I just want to say to the superintendent and on record that, um, I, I, the main questions that we get from parents are not a misunderstanding or not understanding what our options are as parents as much as these questions. That is the main question that they're worried about, uh, not so much. I think everybody agrees that the, the choices are, are wonderful. They're as good as, as meat, and thank you to everyone for doing that. And I say that because I know this afternoon, we're going to have the, uh, that the staff is doing the, um, the town hall, and I'm just saying, the majority of your questions are not going to be, what is, uh, Lee Home Connect? But how is Lee Home Connect going to protect my child? And hence, thank you.
Okay, all right, very good. And I just wanted to add to that, Dr. Spiro, to make sure that I said that in making those decisions, we're working in conjunction with the Department of Health, um, to make sure that our response to any given circumstance is, you know, is documented, warranted, and that we agree on, on how we'll move forward with each of those. So I, I certainly understand the question. We're working hard to make sure that we completely answer and docu, you know, document what the response will be in any given circumstance.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Vaughn?
Thank you. Excuse me. Um, under, under the staffing, quite a few of the teachers that I've heard from are interested in doing a virtual option, including the Lee, um, Virtual School. Now, it's my understanding that to teach at the Lee Virtual School, um, there's, there's quite a bit of a learning curve on exactly how to do that. So I can see that teachers that opt that will probably have to put in training time, above and beyond the normal preschool training and, um, you know, the, the normal back-to-school kind of training. So first of all, I was wondering if there was any money or could there be flexibility in, in that money to provide additional training for those teachers that need it, because they're doing something totally, um, outside of what they're trained to do in the classroom?
So if I understand the question, you were asking if there could be addition, if there could be money provided to teachers in order to pay them for time to train, to be ready to teach in the virtual, if the need exists? Is that, am I understanding your question correctly?
E- exactly, because that, um, it's, it's my understanding that that is quite different from teachers are used to doing. And, um, I've heard comments that, that it is, um, quite a bit of training to get used to that, that way of doing things.
Okay, all right, all right, understood. So I can say that, well, depending on when the training takes place, because as we talked about, the, the need is going to, you know, ebb and flow. So if, if a teacher is training on, uh, their contract time, then that would not, you know, be additional funds. That would just be the, you know, on their contract time. Um, however, we are having ongoing, we being in, uh, our area in budget, we are having ongoing meetings with Dr. Spiro and Mr. Schilling to determine, um, what, what are the needs at this point in time? What would the training path be, and what are the different ways that we can accomplish that? So it, does the possibility exist? Yes, but I, I can't give a definitive answer at this time um, exactly what that might look like, because we are in the process of formulating the plan.
Okay, and, and I totally understand under contract time. But what, yeah, what I'm asking is, it's my belief that, um, to train to do, um, with virtual would go of and be, uh, hot, much higher than the normal contract time. And it would have to be early on, because we would have to have them as school starts. So that's, that's one question. And, um, is there also money coming from under this, under the staffing that you were talking about? And I know this, this is into an H R question as, as well. Um, lots and lots of questions that we get from teachers has to do with the quarantining. And, um, you know, also about substitutes. So, um, with, with. also about substitutes. So, um, with, with staffing, is there a leeway? You know, you talked about flexibility. It's their leeway, if we get into a bind, uh, and I don't have a crystal ball, I'm thinking there are a lot of substitute teachers that aren't going to want to, um, this, when we're face to face, to risk coming in, um, you know, paying an extra stipend to subs that come in face to face. Or, um, I, I know we always pay teachers if they take on, um, for instance, in high school, they teach six out of eight. Um, there may be more teachers wanting to do that if, that shouldn't be a budget problem. But I'm talking about those extra things, the things that quarantine, um, might bring to us. And if we get in a real bind with subs understaffing, is there any flexibility in providing money from, from that pot of money?
Um, okay. So your question again was really related to an additional stipend for substitutes.
That too, yeah, too. Both, both that and also is there understaffing, um, any consideration on teachers that, um, might have to, um, sit out for quarantine and, and, you know, it may not even be, um, their base salary. It may be something like, like the coach that gets, that gets, um, an extra stipend and has to sit out for a couple of weeks or, um, maybe somebody who's taken on extra, um, just any of those extra duties that a teacher might or a coach or any, anybody on staff and, you know, is, is there extra flexibility in the staffing?
Okay. All right. So I think I understand the question in terms of, for anybody who's asking who might need to take on extra duties because there are more people out of the building than what would normally be. Is there some consideration for additional compensation for those people who are still on hand?
Right. Right. It's all, it's kind of two, three questions rolled together.
Yes. Okay. All right. Understood. So, um, I, I see Dr. Pruitt is on, so I don't know whether she would want to comment on that or not. I, I, I guess at this point I can say we have, uh, many, many different things including, uh, what you just talked about that we have to determine, um, how, how will we handle that? There's been no decision made on that yet, but in terms of anything related to, um, compensation, uh, related to staff, all of those, um, being bargainable issues, we are working hard to try to determine what are those? How will we potentially handle those? And then make sure that we have our unions involved in order to come to a conclusion and agreement on each of those things. So I'm feeling like as we're going along, we all have more questions than answers at, you know, and, um, so it is true, it is a valid question, one that we have discussed and working on what type of a resolution we will have to that. So I have to say, I don't have an answer to your question, but it is a great one and we are working on how, what will the answer be? Dr. Pruitt, was there anything you wanted to add to that?
No, thank you, Dr. Desmore. I think you, you spelled it out quite nicely. We are, uh, talking through all of those scenarios with our unions and are working through, um, how we're going to, um, officially bargain the things that need to be bargained and, um, you know, do some, um, memorandums of understanding for other items. Um, so, and all of the things you have brought up, we have brought up as well and are working through those. Um, I will say to you that we do, um, I think I had shared, but I'll say again, we are working on a plan for our guest teachers and training for our guest teachers. Um, and relative to your point, Ms. Vaughn, about the Lee Virtual School, we do, um, have been working with Mr. Schilling to figure out how we can onboard, to your point, the teachers that may be, um, part of the Lee Virtual School for next year and do have a plan in place for that. So, um, appreciate your, your thinking on all of that and, and we are working through it. And as soon as we have some final answers, we will definitely share that with all of you. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Yeah. Cause I, that's been hot questions from the teachers that I've, I've heard from. They all want to know their options. They're, they're, some of them are just panicked about making a decision and you know, this, this is going to be, and I understand exactly what everybody's saying. Um,
And I, and I will also share that we're, we're, we're planning on two things, um, based on some feedback from, um, some of you. We're going to be sending out an anonymous survey to all of our instructional staff where they can respond to, um, their preferences as well as what they, their plan might be and also ask, what are the barriers um, to them making a decision? So that maybe if we're missing some information, we can get that together. Um, and that will also help us with, um, sort of match it up with what our parental responses are. And then we'll do the quote official ask, you know, where their, we'll ask them um, as it gets closer to that start date. But, um, so to, to the feedback I received, we, we, um, are implementing that anonymous survey and I expect it to go out later today or tomorrow morning.
Great. Thank you so much. Great. Thank you, Dr. Pruitt, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. Uh, so just piggyback off of, uh, Ms. Vaughn regarding staffing. So if a, and I'm sure that you all are working on this as well, if a teacher is quarantined, but they are not positive, because this takes forever for us to even find out if you're positive or negative. So in that fourteen days, whatever that looks like, are the teachers compensated for that time that they're off? Because that is a really concern about how do they live if they're going to keep on, they are sent home and, and have to stay home for fourteen days. You only have so many sick days or leave. Uh, what happens to them and their families?
And, 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 uh, to your point, Ms. Jordan, we are working through those scenarios. Um, it, it, optimum world, if, if the class or a wing of a school or the school itself was quieted, we would hope that the instruction was kept virtually and that the teacher would continue to work.
Okay.
But i- in, in case for some reason that is not, um, available or not, um, possible, we're, we're working through, in, in, in our discussions, there's really two types of situations. And one is, am I quarantining due to, um, something happening at my work site? Or am I having to quarantine because I went to a family party on the weekend and somebody there tested positive? Like, i- i- these are two different scenarios. You know, one specifically related to the work site and then one related to, you know, your personal situation. Uh, but we are working through the details of that, not only the reporting of it, as Dr. Desmore shared, but also again, about, um, what that's going to look like and how we're going to track that for our employees. Um, and also just a reminder that, um, everyone has the opportunity for the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act, which entitles them to that ten days. But that, that is always the first thing, um, that's available to employees. But understanding that, you know, during this time, there could be opportunities where they might have more than one, you know, time they have to quarantine. That's why we're going to make sure we have those decisions made and the policies put in place before, uh, we go back to the stocks.
No, I appreciate that because even when we say they have emergency ten days, it may take that ten days to get the results back. And then it's another fourteen days. So now you're looking at twenty-four days. It, it's just, I know it's an insane world right now, but that's just some questions that are being asked. My other question, and thank you so much, Angela. Uh, my other question, uh, is regarding the, the, uh, personal protective measure. Right now, we already have, we're talking about ten to fifteen million a year. We already had a recall on some product. So that's ten to fifteen million, we're probably going to have, it'll probably be more, right? Because we'll have to have that stuff in, I guess, in warehouses somewhere, whereas if we have these recalls, we can then have the, the, the product that is needed at any given moment. Because we cannot wait for a product to come in if we're sending, recalling all the product. What are they, what are they doing in between that time?
Well, okay. So the, the, most of the, uh, PVE that I've listed, so the mask for both students and staff, hand sanitizer, dispensers for those, wipes, um, thermometers.
Hand sanitizer was the recall, though.
Face shields. Yes, but all those things are stocked and all those things are now and will be stocked in our, in the district's warehouse. So the, the recall on the hand sanitizer was, um, hand sanitizer that we had stocked in our warehouse that we had gotten from the vendor. We're getting all of that product back from the schools that had, you know, any. And then the vendor basically comes and picks all of those, all of our supply up and replaces that supply with a suitable product. So the items that I'm talking here are the items that we have stocked in warehouse. And our plan is to create a, basically a delivery schedule for each location based on, um, something, an amount of students, staff that they have in their location so that we can continually supply schools with, uh, all the things that, all those things that they need to help, um, maintain the safety at the location.
Okay. So as soon as it is, uh, picked up, it is replaced?
Yes.
Immediately. Okay. And then my, my last, okay, I'm sorry.
I was, I was, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, what do we get? At this point, we haven't received the replacement stock from our vendor, but we'll receive replacement stock. We'll stock it in the warehouse and we'll provide schools with, uh, inappropriate replacement.
Okay. So if we haven't received it, what do they have in the, what do they have in the interim then?
We, we've got other, we've got other, we had other hand sanitizer on hand that was not part of the recall.
Okay.
Right? And, and that's what they have. There was only one limited product, which was, um, one bottle, sixteen point nine ounce flip top that was part of the recall. We had other supplies in the warehouse that had nothing to do with that.
Okay. Perfect. And then my last question is the defogging. What is, and the cost was five to six thousand dollars each time we use that. So what is the square footage that that equates to? I mean, is it like a ten by ten? Or is it an entire, uh, school, a class, classroom size? What does that entail?
Uh huh. So, uh, so right now, we've, as, as, as to my knowledge, when we've gone in to do, um, these particular cleanings, it's been kind of a site wide thing. It's been, you know, uh, uh, an entire school because you can't really know exactly, you know, where a person has been, uh, within a particular location. So to my knowledge, when I quoted that five to six thousand, that is really a site wide, um, cost. But I will get more, uh, detail from operations to be able to, um, get some more detail about exactly how that's billed. Is it by square footage? I would assume that if they're coming, it's just going to do a smaller contained area that it would be a cheaper cost. But because of the nature of it, um, I think we really have gone more site wide because it's, it's very difficult to say that, you know, a, a particular person might have just been contained in one particular area.
Right. Thank you. That's why I was kind of, to me, looking at the figures and just visualizing a whole entire school or classroom, that's why I was asking that question. So thank you so much. Those are my questions.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Um, Ms. Jevanelli.
Thank you. Um, actually, I'm going to piggyback off of what, um, Ms. Jordan just was talking about. Um, my cure, my, I, um, my questions were similar to what she, she, so she answered part of it. Uh, the other question is, um, like, are we, do we have more than one company? Cause we could have several schools at one time that needs to be disinfect, disinfected. And, um, so have we gone out for an RFP on that? You know, you know, and who are we using? Um, that was one, one of my questions.
Um, so the, the, the service that we're using is under, uh, an existing bid that we have. I don't know the exact vendor or vendors that we're using, um, but we can certainly, I can certainly find that question out and get, and find that answer out and get back to you.
Okay. So, right. So that, and their, so their bid would be if it's exa- was not about disinfecting for, you know, COVID nineteen. So how does that work when that changes the scope of their bid? With what they're doing now? How does that work?
Okay. So, um, so the bid that we're using is the indoor air quality, which includes that within the scope.
Okay. Um, thank you. Um, then my other question actually is back to, um, employees and so forth regarding the, um, I think, you know, um, this is for, uh, Dr. Pruitt. But, um, I, are we looking at like a pandemic pay policy plan? Because, um, we have to have something in place, uh, for these employees. Like, um, I think it was, I don't know who brought it up, ma- maybe Ms. Vaughn. Um, testing, or it might've been Ms. Jordan, actually. Testing could, could go on. People could c- continue testing positive when they're well and they can't come back to work. So we, uh, to no fault of their own. So, and, and it's, it's going to be difficult to determine where some, right now, the way things are going, where somebody, uh, contracts COVID from. Um, even if it's at the grocery store and they, and at work, you know, it could be either or. So it's hard to determine where, where they're going to, where that's going to happen, uh, the way our, um, the, the, the numbers are rising. So I, I think that, uh, I know, uh, at my husband's work, they pay because they have to. I mean, they want their employees well. They want their employees to not be concerned. They're, they're, they're not going to get, receive a paycheck. They need that comfort to come back to work beforehand. They need that comfort. And I think it's really important that, um, they know that they're not, they're not going to be without, uh, pay when they're out sick. And, um, you know, and we can only hope that everybody that becomes ill with it can continue teaching. But that, there's no guarantee in that. Uh, that's the unknown of this Co- of COVID nineteen. It, people don't know what, you know, it's going to ha- what's going to happen to them. So that's why we all need to be cautious and careful and, and be thinking of others. Um, so I think it's really important that there's a pandemic, um, pay policy in plan, uh, you know, in, in, um, in the works before, um, teachers come back to, um, work and our employees come back to work. So, you know, cause and then it, then it can go into workers' comp and that needs to be afforded to them. So I'm going to keep pushing that envelope, um, and I want to, until I hear that that's in place. So I, 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 uh, hope that that's part of the bargaining that's going on. I think that's really it. I will, um, at the end, I'll, I'll address the, uh, Guardian, um, the Guardian, um, monies. Cause I don't think we're getting all the information on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jevanelli. Okay, um, Ms. Gittens.
Yes, thank you. Uh, in this discussion, I, I understood was to be about the finance and the budget side of all of this. So my question to kind of bring it back around is that five to six thousand for each deep cleaning, it's kind of, pardon, but, uh, the five to six thousand, do we have the budget to cover that? And also the summer programs that are going on now in the sports programs are kind of microcosms of, of what we're looking at going forward in reopening. So a lot of people, you know, will want to watch how, how that goes. And so far, do we have any, um, budget, uh, thoughts or statements that you can make about? I, I know it's too early on the summer program that just started, but on the sports program, have we had to hire more, um, uh, staff to do any cleaning? Have we increased our budget uh, for any pandemic considerations? So budget wise? Does that make, you understand?
Uh, yes, I believe so. So your first question was for the additional cleaning that we're talking about, do we have budget for that? Um, and so that was, you know, kind of the, the point that I was, that we were making, um, when we were talking about formulating a budget, is we have to make sure, um, that we formulate the budget in order to cover these costs because we know that they're coming. Uh, so we are working to try to get what we believe, but the hard part is you just don't, you know, we're gonna, we're estimating something that has never happened before, right? So we don't, um, we're, we're making our best estimate of, you know, how many times might this happen? What could potentially the cost be for that? But for all of our, um, that list of like the personal protective measures, the equipment and the response measures, which would include the cleaning, we are building into our budget, um, amount, um, that based on our estimates, um, would cover that. Of course, what that means is because it is a substantial amount, as you heard, um, we've got to make sure how, how are we trying to cover that or what is it that we're reducing in order to make sure that we can, um, cover that, that expense? Because really what, that's what that is. Um, so we've worked on that reduction plan for how it, um, you know, that divisions in the district budget can, what is it that we can reduce in order to accommodate those additional substantial expenses that we expect to come into the budget next year? So that was a long way of saying yes, but we have, but we have to, you know, but we had to make adjustments. So that was a long way of saying yes, but we have, but we have to, you know, but we had to make adjustments for that because again, that's a substantial amount. That ten to fifteen million dollars, uh, I quoted, didn't even include that cleaning.
Right, so the question mainly right now, and I know it's a moving target out there. But we have been a couple of weeks now into the sports programs and the practices. So is there any kind of window where we've had, I've understood, stood where we've had to do extra cleaning or whatever with that? Can we look at that as, as a um, uh, kind of a forecast?
Yes. Yeah, yes, we can, we can and we did. So throughout um the sports program, it was kind of like a little mini test of, you know, what was going on. And so did um provide, came up with our um scenario of how we were gonna provide um those, the protective measures of the supplies for that, which we did do. Um, there was instances in which um some additional cleaning had to be done because of, you know, positive case. So it went as, you know, po, probably um we would have expected, but it has been several weeks. And based on um what we gave as far as the personal protective supplies, we did use that information to try to, or, or we are looking at that information now to try to see, did it, does it match up with what we kind of thought we would be doing during the year? So your point is well taken, and we are, you know, examining what that looks like.
And Ms. Gittens, anything else?
Uh, no, that was it. I was just, you know, that was my point to kind of look at what we're doing in incremental stages as we introduce this program, that program, and how has it affected us? Yeah, and I, I guess later on, I can, I would like to know, have there been situations where we had to use um extra custodial or extra whatever with the um uh sports programs that we hadn't counted on? So have there been incidences and, and?
Thank you. All right. So I think if we, um, I know Dr. Desimore has about four more slides. So I think if we can let her proceed and uh get through that, some of those questions might be answered within the presentation. And then we'll have ample time hopefully for questions at the end. So thank you.
Okay, all right. I just, I, I, uh, thank you. I do hear your point, Ms. Gittens. So um possibly, maybe we have a, a time um set for maybe a debrief or something. Okay, we have the summer program, we have the sports programs. What were the results of those in terms of how they went in, kind of the reactions and, and what we had to provide? So we can provide something that provides that information. Okay, so given, I do appreciate the questions because as we, we have um a lot of work still left to do and a lot of things to work through. So these are all these pieces that are swirling in the air that as we put our budget together, it's like our pieces will come together for the ultimate excuse when it's done. Um, that hopefully addresses all of these things and the thing that, you know, we have um so many different scenarios to deal with. So um, the questions are well received. Thank you. We'll move on. I knew that that was um a big topic, so I just wanted to discuss that. We will move on um to the capital portion of the budget because we did have some detail that we wanted to share with you um related to new sales tax projections and then how the capital plan is formulating right now based on those projections. So I'm gonna give it over to Sarah again to take, Sarah and Kelly to take you through that information.
Hello again. Um, Daryl, if you could bring the presentation back up, we're on the sales tax revenue slide. Um, so we wanted to talk to you about the sales tax revenue projections again. Um, because while the general fund portion of the budget has been minimally impacted at this point, I do know our sales tax revenue is expected to decrease. So um, we had presented some information to you um in the last budget meeting or the one prior to that. And our revenue projections have not changed since that. Um, so I wanted to take this opportunity as well to kind of bring you up to date on where we're at with FY twenty. Um, one, because that year is wrapping up for our revenue. And two, we really made our FY twenty one through twenty five projections in late March when the pandem, pandemic was ramping up in our area. So um, to our revised projection for FY twenty due to COVID was seventy five million. We are about three million away from meeting that goal. Um, so we have two months left that we will collect in FY twenty. And so you'll see that statement at the bottom of your slide, the bottom left hand, where it says additional revenue um will be accrued back to FY twenty. And I just wanna clarify that because um the revenue that we receive in July and August are from taxable sales that occurred prior to June thirtieth. And that is why we accrue that revenue back. We followed that process um last year when, our first year of the sales tax, and that's a practice, um, we'll continue to follow. So um, while FY twenty, we, um, good news is that we don't think we will recognize the eighty million dollar revenue loss as originally projected. But we do recognize there will be some loss there. Um, and that's where you can see in the top right hand of your slides, um, the projections we had made by month and how those numbers came in, and then July and August left too. Um, so the twenty one through FY twenty five, um, you know, a huge hit to our sales tax. We ran many different scenarios on how we thought this would play out. But we decided to just go with the most conservative estimates because we would much rather um scale things back now and know what we can afford, rather than build too many things into our capital plan that we are not able to afford. So based on the projections that we made from April to August, we're hopeful that the revenue will come in higher. And that's something we'll continue to evaluate through fiscal year twenty one and make adjustments to the budget if we need it. Um, but for right now, we are sticking with our original estimates just based on everything that's going on with the numbers increasing. Um, and, and a lot of economic factors that will impact this. Are there any questions on this before I turn it over to Kelly to discuss the rest of the capital plan? Okay, thank you.
Board members, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. So the capital plan, you know, we've been working on it um with operations and working to come up with a capital plan that fits within the, the budget that we have now with the reduced revenue and things like that. Um, since we've got our projections from the state on the uh increase in the tax rule, we did increase our um number in our capital plan as well to align with that updated number. Um, some things I wanna point out, um, look, but you see the capital plan just as, you know, numbers and things when it comes through. Um, we have attached on your um information a breakdown of what falls within each of those categories to kind of help you to see where things, um, what really falls into which categories, what's in there. And then we've also looked up the funding source for sales tax. So um, on, if you go through there, you can see like our, the safety projects that are being paid with sales tax, the maintenance projects being paid with sales tax, the large and small CIP projects. Um, now, remembering that this is always a moving target, so depending on if we get more revenue, we may switch them, so over to sales tax. Um, you know, add some more things as we go. So this is gonna be a moving target, but this is what we have right now. Um, in order to move forward with the budget, we had to finalize it as it stands right now. Some information I wanted to provide to you um regarding our debt. Um, as of right now, we have two hundred and thirty seven point eight million in non-sales tax related debt. So that's previous debt that we had that's continuing for the next five years. Right now, we have an estimated average of sixty five percent of the recommended millage usage over that same time span. Now remember, the um statute requires that you can use no more than seventy five percent of your capital outlet millage for um debt. And the board has um set that limit at fifty percent, so we're within those guidelines. Um, the cops, um, we're gonna be paying off the cops issue within the next five years, that's the twenty thirteen issue, so that one will be dropping off. The latest borrowings, as you all know, um, we just actually had the closing recent middle school MM, but we have closed recently um on Gateway. We have T by addition and middle school MM, and of course, middle school MM was just closed. I think it was last week or the week before, it's very, very soon. Um, we are estimating that we'll have another three hundred and fifty million dollars um that will be, need to be borrowed over the next five years. And those have to do with the new schools that are showing up in the current plan. Um, any questions on the capital plan or anything on the debt? Okay.
I'm sorry, um, Ms. Lutter, uh, Ms. Gittens?
I'm sorry, I had to keep my button closer. Um, thank you, Ms. Lutter. One question about the um, uh, the cops. We have taken out, just to be clear, when we're building, we do take out cops to go ahead and pay it off at today's rates and today's dollars, and then it saves us money in the long run. And then we pay those cops off by uh the sales tax and the different things that come in. So if the way, and I, I know I'm making it kind of short and sweet, but, so if we pay them back based on the taxes that we are now seeing a decrease in, can you show how, to explain how we will, you know, bridge that gap?
So let me, I just wanna make clear, one of the reasons that we are using cops still instead of paying directly um for, from sales tax for the schools was because of the statute that came out that said that um if any costs that exceed the cost per student station um in construction has to be funded from a cop, so it's our only mechanism to do that. Um, you all have had, heard a lot of the discussions from every district in the state that there is no way that a school can be built within those dollar amounts that they have set for the cost per student stations. It's just not feasible with the amount that they have set. So um cops is our only option um in order to build schools at this time. Because you remember, our original plan was to pay as we go from our sales tax. That was our original plan. The first year, we were going to take out um a bond in order to front some of it, and then we were gonna do pay as you go. That is not an option for us as long as the statute remains the way it is, so we are doing the cops this time. Um, under short duration so that we have the cops um that are being paid from the sales tax are paid off within that time period that we have the sales tax. So with every school that we have said is gonna be paid from sales tax will be paid off, the cops loans will be paid off by the end of that sales tax time. So that will not extend beyond that and become a problem for our villages. It will always stay within the sales tax and be paid from the cops. Um, we will be paying some with some impact fees if we have the availability for that. Because remember, we had this discussion not too long ago, we use our most restrictive funding first. And our impact fees is our most restrictive funding in that you can only pay for new student stations with that. So that's the first one that we go to, and then we switch to sales tax for those schools that are in our plan, the sales tax plan. Um, as far as the, the interest, we are getting today's interest rates um for those. Um, but anytime you have to do a cops versus a pay as you go, there, there's additional cost associated with that.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions, board members?
I just wanted to add that the, of course, the, the current interest rate on our um, the middle school one that we just did was very low. So it was very, a very good interest rate.
Okay, thank you. All right. If you want to, you want to put it on then, you have other questions from board members?
Okay, so the next slide, we talk about future year considerations. Because as you know, as we move forward in the budget, we have to keep planning, not just for the, the year that we're in, the following, but we have to keep looking out to see where um we need to make sure for all of our um things as we move forward. Some future year things that we know we have to account for, that we're going to have to have discussions this year, is the rising cost of health insurance. We all know that the, that cost is going up every year. Um, and then we don't expect that to change. We do expect it to continue to rise. So that is something we have to keep in our minds as we move forward. Um, the legislature this year, you know, I had this discussion with you all before, is they increased the retirement rate substantially. Um, from what we understand, that is going to continue into next year. We'll see another large increase in retirement rates next year as well. Um, we have salaried negotiations that still have to occur that we're working on. Um, and of course, the new forty seven five amount for our beginning teachers will help us. Um, but it's, you know, we have a lot of staff to think about. Um, the um food service reimbursement and staffing plans. Um, as you know, during the summer, we had increased staffing for our feeding through the summer um because of the COVID and things that were happening in our grab and go sites. Um, we do not know exactly what's gonna happen moving forward. So we're having to think about all of these things with our food service reimbursements. Um, what happens when there's a disruption in the school year? Um, because of COVID, you know, what do we have to do? We're gonna have to be able to adjust to those things quickly, excuse me. Um, and so we're having to look at that um as we move forward as well. Any questions on those? If not, I'll hand it back over to, I believe Amy is taking it.
Hold on one second. Board members, okay, I see no blue hands. You can go ahead.
Right. So to wrap then, um, let's talk a little bit about our next steps. So first, we need to, um, as we talked a little bit about earlier, we need to complete that CARES plan. Those um grant applications, most of them at least are due today. And we've had a lot of staff hard at work in order to complete those. But then to do that, we really have to finalize in addition to um that kind of the reopening school and how those different initiatives through the CARES Act are going to weave into that plan and at which schools. And um, so we and our um comrades in academic services will be working hard to do that. Um, we'll be finalizing the budget reductions. So in order to accommodate all of those uh things that we were just talking about in terms of the protective measures and cleaning of schools and making sure um that our sites are as safe as they possibly can be, uh, we need to make sure that we clear space in the budget in order to accomplish that. So we'll be uh finalizing those reductions. And then uh, once we do that, we will summarize and present that information to you um in a memo format in advance of the approval of tentative budget. So when we go to the timeline, which is the last slide in the presentation, we've got um the dates listed for you just as a reminder of what happens and when that happens. And of course, that's laid out um in statute as part of that term requirement or truth and village in terms of the timeline in which all of these things must, must happen. So we've listed those out for you, um culminating in the approval of the, the, uh, the tentative budget hearing on July twenty eighth. And then finally, that final budget hearing on September the eighth. So in between um those periods of time, um, we'll be working very hard to resolve and come to a conclusion on all of these questions that you had today plus some. And um, and, and put that together in a format for the budgets. Just understanding and knowing that um there could be some pretty significant changes between the approval of the tentative budget in July and the approval of the final budget in September, depending on what our circumstances are and what happens. As we know, we should um be ready to expect anything on, at any moment on any given day. And we're gonna work um hard to be flexible with that. So um, that's uh the information that we had for you today. So I stand ready to answer any last questions um before we go to the next.
Okay, so um I have Ms. Gittens?
Yes, on that last slide, we had the dates and you have to advertise. And this may be where Ms. Bruno weighs in as well, um Attorney Dupree Bruno. Um, once we advertise, there's a timeline, I'm sure. And then if there are all of these changes, which I'm, there probably will be after July twenty fourth, then we have to advertise again. Is that not all going to push this whole process uh further down the road? And how do we, let's say, start without an approved budget? Or can we start a school year without an approved budget?
So maybe it So maybe if if I can help that, so our, so but so the school board, according to the TRIM law, needs to adopt the millages, which really is what the budget is about. Now, remember, the budget is a moving document. It moves, it it changes, it moves all year long. And so throughout the year, you'll be receiving the updates on those changes as you typically would. The approval of the budget, the tentative budget in July approves the millages and it approves the amount of the budget that we have at that time. That does mean that there's a reason why that wouldn't change because it it always does. I guess my point in saying that it could move and change is that because of so many things that are going on, we may see much different changes and much more exaggerated changes than maybe what we have seen in the past because of our circumstances. So Ms. Bruno, I didn't didn't mean to interrupt. I was just trying to clarify something I was saying.
Yeah, and I would agree with that. Basically, I think we would be fine once it's advertised and then there's both accepting the budget. And if there's anything else that changes, we'll move forward from there. So I would agree with what Dr. Desmore indicated.
Okay, Ms. Patrika.
Good morning. So thank you, Dr. Desmore, for your for your agility. I think that's a word that Dr. Atkins used in the in the press conference that you guys had last week. And I think that's really a theme that we all have to sort of embrace and get used to as we move forward through this thing. And that's kind of what I'm hearing you say about this budget. We're going to have to be agile. We're going to have to respond to unexpected expenses expenses that come up here and there now and then or frequently because we really just don't know. That being said, I'm getting the sense that you're making very conservative estimates and you're looking for cost savings everywhere you can. I do have a couple of questions about some of the stuff that you presented. In terms of reimbursements for PPE, did I have a dream or do I remember you saying that seventy five percent of that would be reimbursed by FEMA? Twelve and a half percent would be reimbursed by the state and the rest would be on us? Do I remember somebody saying that?
Well, that's typically, yes, that's typically how a FEMA reimbursement would work. And we do have the first step of that, which is the request for public assistance already filed with FEMA in order to move forward with the claims. I guess what I just cautioned us on is that everybody is doing that, right? You know, across the nation. So when it's all said and done, we just don't know at this point what kind of federal money is going to be available for this and whether we can completely rely on that fact. Because it may come to pass that maybe something different happens because of the demand on the system and the supply of funds to help relieve that. But that is the plan to file with FEMA for those claims. But we have to plan, you know, well, number one, we don't know the resources. Number two, you know how long that takes. So we're, you know, we have to plan as though this is it for us. And when we get reimbursement, that if we get reimbursement, that's going to be great and very helpful. But we have to proceed as though, you know, that may not happen.
All right. And and is it fair for us to compare the lengthy wait we've had so far just for approval of FEMA expenses associated with Irma to to what we could expect through this process?
I I think it's fair. That's the assumption that we are making, you know, at this point.
Okay, and sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say they have referenced an expedited process for things like PPE. So we are also applying for that expedited process. And not having any experience in that process, not sure. But by its name, let's hope that that's what it is.
Okay, and while we're on the subject of FEMA, I believe Susan Malley deserves some kudos for the hard work that she's done for the reimbursements from Irma. And I know she continues to work work hard on those. So thank you to her for that.
Absolutely. As as a matter of fact, we got some, thank you for that recognition. It is true that she deserves a lot of kudos for that and I do thank you for celebrating that. Because we did just get some really good news yesterday about a couple of appeals that we had in play. So we'll be sending the entire board an update on that in the upcoming briefing or the upcoming update to the board. But thank you for that because it is a very arduous, tedious process. And so thank you.
Yeah, she's worked it but often. It's been frustrating. Okay, so do we have any unexpected expenditures from the fourth quarter that are not covered by CARES Act dollars?
Unexpected expenditures from the fourth quarter not covered through CARES Act dollars. So the the fourth quarter of our fiscal year, so the CARES Act.
I mean expenditures from distance learning that that we had during the fourth quarter of the academic year, you know, like Chromebooks and hotspots and all that.
So, yes, so so hotspots and okay, so hotspots and part of the summer virtual program were built into the CARES funds as part of what could be covered by CARES. So we did build that in. I think your question was, was there anything that was not covered by CARES? Yes?
Yes.
Well, yes, we didn't build in any of the cost of the technology into CARE. So none of the additional Chromebooks that we purchased for students, that was not built in. I'm not, I'm not necessarily thinking of anything else at this time that we expended that was not built into that.
Okay, just a couple more quick questions. When you talk about the three point three million going to charters, you mentioned something about their, are they going to like piggyback on our orders for PPE? Is because you said some of that could be coming back to us. I wasn't really clear on on what you meant by that.
I think Sarah's here, so let her respond. But I think with the with the charters, they can they they get their, they get their own money, so they'll deal with their plans. The private schools are the ones where we kind of have to more, you know, closely monitor that. But as far as the personal protective equipment, they will, you know, purchase their own through their own CARES Act allocation and will just be the ones that are the conduit for that. Okay, so the the privates, we do have to purchase for them, but it would be through their. Hold on, let me, let me get Sarah up. It is that she's trying to explain to me that I've been trying to relate to you. Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Hey there. So of the three point three million that is set aside for charters and private schools, nine hundred thousand of that is for private schools. And we have to, we as the district have to maintain control of those funds. So we are obligated to make those purchases on their behalf. And given that this is federal dollars, we do need to comply with our own procurement policies, which would include them utilizing our bids and other contracts.
Okay, good. That that clarifies it for me. Thank you. A couple, three more questions. When will bargaining begin?
Ms. Patrika, excuse me, just one second. I have an issue. I'm going to ask Ms. Jordan to take over for me just for a few minutes. Ms. Jordan?
I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I don't believe that Ms. Jordan is on the line, but see if we can, I'll see if I can get in touch with her. I'm not sure what happened.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Mrs. Morgan, may I ask you to take over for me just for a few minutes?
Certainly.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Ms. Morgan, may I continue?
You may, please. You have three more questions.
Yeah, so when does, when will bargaining begin? I know you can't tell me exactly when, but what's your guesstimate on that?
We're hoping, we're working on preliminary information and we hope to schedule an executive session. Hopefully with, in the next, you know, week or two. And then go ahead and begin that process after the executive session. And relative to things specific to reopening of schools and COVID, those are ongoing through the labor management process, which is dictated through the current contracts. Items that we're allowed to do in that manner, we currently are. But in terms of looking at, you know, the contracts for next, you know, quote unquote, next year, which is really this year. Like I said, we're we're working towards doing that as soon as we can.
All right, and to the to the point that several of my colleagues made earlier, I believe that a lot of the unanswered questions out there are surrounding that bargaining process and the work that you're you're doing. And as long as we can assure the public that that you're working closely with the union and that whatever unanswered questions will be addressed in the bargaining process, I feel like we're in good shape. Okay, so reserves. It it's my understanding we have very healthy reserves that we could tap if we needed to for COVID related expenses. But I just want to put it out there that it is hurricane season. So we don't want to, we don't want to go too crazy with our reserves. Can you, Dr. Desmore, provide us with a statement on the health of our reserves?
Yes, yes, I can. So when we came into this fiscal year, you know, our our fund balance ratio was at a little over eleven percent, which is, which is a healthy ratio. We discussed in our last board meeting about how much of that reserves we, the board would possibly want to tap into. And at the end of that conversation, we had come to, you know, about five million. So we're working to try to stay within that scenario that we had discussed at that time. However, you know, kind of as we continue to put the, you know, the Rubik's Cube together, we'll come back and kind of discuss how that looks. What we try to do, what we believe is happening is that of some of unexpended funds from year, the you know, with having to cease operations at the, you know, at the end of the fiscal year, we tried to just kind of hold on to as much of those funds that we could so that we could help, they could help, help us in utilizing them for some of the kind of one time or hopefully nonrecurring costs such as the PPE that we're talking about. So how that picture is coming together, we don't have a finalized yet for you to be able to say this is what our reserve will look like, at least as far as the tentative budget in FY twenty one will be. But within the next week, we will get there and we are working to stay within the parameters that you all gave us when we had that conversation originally.
Okay, thank you. And then my my final question is really more of a comment to Dr. Atkins. I think that all the questions surrounding quarantines, whether a student has to be quarantined, whether a teacher has to be quarantined.
Yeah.
What are the metrics that we'll use to determine whether, when that will happen, how that will happen? I think it would be really helpful for the public if we could have a representative from the Department of Health and or a representative from Lee Health come in and answer those questions for us in a public meeting. I know that that other school boards in the state have had those representatives present at meetings. And I really believe it would provide the the public with the clarity and the confidence that they need heading back into the school year. Those are my comments. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Patrika. And I'm going to ask Ms. Jordan now to take over the meeting in Ms. Fisher's absence. Any other questions? Can we see hands? Don't put up, I can't see, we can't, Debbie and I can't see your hands. You got to raise your hands. Debbie, can you take over?
Yes, I can. And I apologize, my internet went down, so I had to get back on.
It's okay.
Okay, I do see hands. I see Ms. Gittens.
Okay, two quick questions on piggybacking on Ms. Patrika's question about the unexpected expenditures coming from the CARES Act. And Dr. Desmore, you mentioned the technology and the Chromebooks. Can you just remind us then which budget or where did the additional Chromebooks? How did we pay for that?
That's came from the capital budget.
Okay. And the second thing, Dr. Pruitt, a lot of questions as you were all around the the bargaining and everything. And I I kind of heard two things from you. One is bargaining, one is just agreements or, you know, I don't know what you would call it. So the COVID labor management issues are not necessarily then in the bargaining, are we looking at two different things that we're working on? So the bargaining overall in the contracts for teachers for the year as opposed to the COVID labor management issues that are going on? Am I correct in that?
Yes, in other words, the contract allows for us to work through the COVID information through the labor management process, which means it's not the full bargaining teams. It's it's a, it's the the executives from Talcum Spout and then myself and Mr. Rothenberg and then any other staff that is relevant to the information that we're discussing. For example, if it's a payroll, we have the Director of Payroll there and things like that. So that, yes, those are ongoing conversations and meetings that literally we're having every day. And then the the executive session and the bargaining is going to be relative to now that we tentatively know what our pot of money is. And we will, that's the, where we'll bring the teams back together formally and we'll review, you know, compensation possibilities and how that, you know, the forty seven five is going to impact. Because even though the governor says it, it still has to go through our bargaining process. And then that would also be anything else that would be in general in nature. Like, let's say there was no COVID, but we wanted to look at, you know, the the teacher planning time or we wanted to look at working conditions, then that would be part of that formal bargaining process. And that's anything that's formal, we would discuss through executive session prior to discussing those items at the formal bargaining.
And for the record, there are a lot of teacher questions and comments. And can you address the fact that how the unions are connecting with or, you know, dealing with those questions from the from the teachers and from the other employees? Because normally in bargaining, they would have their meetings and they would discuss things. But, you know, we're not doing that. So can you just for the record state how they are making sure in those executive sessions that the questions are bubbling up from all of?
Well, I I can't speak to that specifically, but what I can tell you is that they continue to provide us with questions that come from their membership. And we're working through those through our pandemic meetings that we're having to to try to make sure that we're addressing those. And but, you know, specifically to their day to day, I I really can't comment on that. But I know they're doing something because we're getting, like I said, on a daily basis, we're getting questions and concerns that are that are coming up from the from the memberships.
I'm just saying, this is a team effort for all of us working together today. So this is great. Thank you. And Ms. Fisher, Ms. Javonelli would be next to ask the question.
Yes, okay, I see her little blue hand. And thank you, Mrs. Morgan and Ms. Jordan. I appreciate it. Okay, Mrs. Javonelli.
Okay, so I'm just going to piggyback a little bit off of what Ms. Patrika and Ms. Gittens just mentioned. Some of the support staff are concerned as well as teachers and that they're being left out. So I want to make sure that bargaining is going to be in, you know, and I reiterate, the pandemic pay policy would be, still would include the support staff, right, Dr. Pruitt?
I I think any conversations around compensation, yes, they would, we would with each of the bargaining units relative to that. And then if it's going to be universal for all employees, then what we do is we have a joint session and we would have both teams there to discuss those issues.
Thank you for clarifying that. That's really important to the employees. So one of the other questions I had, are we at, is this at the end now where we can ask our final questions on this, on the budget? Is this where we're at? Because I want to make sure.
Dr. Desmore?
Or is she still working?
Yes, we still have the RFQ. Yes, we still have the RFQ refresh presentation.
Okay, we'll keep going then, I'll wait. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Madam Chair, that's a different presentation. If there are questions regards to the budget, we need to get all those questions answered, then we can move forward with the RFQ.
Right. So Mrs. Javonelli, is your question specifically directed to the budget?
Yes. So one of my questions was regarding the ad valorem, that monies that has to be moved. When will that happen?
It happened yesterday.
Okay, so we don't, the board doesn't have to take any action?
No, no.
Okay. That was one of the questions that I had. And then regarding the Guardian, I wanted to get, I wanted to clarify some of that. It is correct that there are two different, there were two different appropriations associated with the school Guardian program. It is correct that one of those appropriations was vetoed. However, Lee County District can still move forward with implementing the Guardian program. I have confirmed that in addition to the appropriations in the budget that was passed, other funds could be made available for additional school districts who wish to implement the Guardian program. So I think it's really important that everyone is aware of that, because I don't think they are. It would be my recommendation that we follow Sheriff Marcinho's recommendation and implement the hybrid version of the Guardian program. Specifically, the hybrid program would continue with the least school resource officers in every school and would allow existing employees of Lee County School District to qualify to volunteer to go through the school Guardian program and training and certification process. Certainly not the proposal to replace existing, absolutely not, the R SROs. And, you know, I'm, my husband's law enforcement, so I would never recommend anything like that. So I strongly am against that. So that would be what I just wanted to let everybody know, there's still monies for the Guardian program. So I don't know where that misconception came from. Yes, they want to utilize some of that money, but I think it's important that we have that information.
Right. And we're going to let Dr. Atkins weigh in here. Dr. Atkins?
Just remember, we had, we're scheduling an opportunity where we're going to talk about this on July 28th, and we will have law enforcement in the room, so we have a robust discussion about it.
Thank, yes, and thank you. I just, I just thought I'd bring that back up because it's, we've had some board members that are thinking that the money's not there. So I just wanted to clarify that. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I look forward to that discussion myself and identifying those other available funds. At this time, Ms. Vaughn?
Thank you. I wanted a clarification on any information that came from the state regarding minimum teacher salary at 47.5. Obviously, this is a bargaining item, but does that mean that the 47.5, we can't fund at less than, at less than that? Or can we, I'm not even sure how to ask the question. Oh, Madam Chair, I would just caution. What direction have we gotten on that 47.5?
Hold on one second, Ms. Vaughn. Attorney DePree Bruno.
Madam Chair, I would just caution the board with regards to going into details about any provisions that may be in a collective bargaining negotiation. We don't want to overstep and we definitely don't want to interfere with any negotiations that may happen. I think this is something that Dr. Pruitt needs to talk to them directly about to flesh out. I just am concerned that if we start talking about terms and things of that nature, we may be doing ourselves more harm than good. And I don't think it's appropriate to do that in this setting at this time.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's fair enough. I'm just curious in general, what the state said with that.
Our plan, Ms. Vaughn, is to, we're working on scenarios now. And the plan would be before we would go to the bargaining table, we would have an executive session with the board and review all that and get your input and your thoughts and ideas around that. And we would be happy to do that as soon as, you know, we're able to get that scheduled.
Okay, but I guess all that I'm asking is, is it, is every school district in Florida going to have a minimum salary according to, not our bargaining, but according to information from the state? Is every school district going to have minimum salary at 47.5?
That is the governor's expectation.
Good answer. Thank you. Thank you both very much. Mrs. Patrica?
Just a quick question on the other funds that were referred to that are available for the Guardian program? Is there, I mean, I know the $500,000 statewide for the stipends for Guardians, but what's the other money available for Guardians?
That 500,000 is what I'm aware of. If there are others, I'm not aware.
And that's $500,000 for the entire state, right?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay. And the 41 million that was cut was meant to be used to create Guardian programs, and that's gone?
Yeah, for training and certification, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. And Dr. Atkins, to your point, when we do have this robust discussion, if we could look at, in fact, I'll send you a list of budgetary concerns I have surrounding this to include, and I've mentioned them before, increases in liability insurance, increases in workers' compensation insurance, cost of supplies, cost of not just upfront training, but ongoing training. All of those costs, I'd like estimates as part of whatever discussion we have. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to add, we did have been corresponding with our legislative liaisons, Ashley Stasil with Capital Strategies, to specifically ask, this is what we know about. Is there anything else going on or any other particular parts that maybe we are unaware of? And she is looking into that as well.
Okay, any other further questions regarding the budget? Okay, seeing none, I will propose that we will take a break if anyone needs a break before we go on to the RFQ refresh. And I see some thumbs up, so how about, it's 10:53, how about we come back at 11:03? Okay, 10 minutes. Thank you.
Mary, we can't hear you.
Thank you. I didn't realize I was muted. I apologize. Okay, it's eleven oh six now, and we will resume with our request for requirements refresh. And I see Mr. Ross in the Curriculum Resource Room. Welcome, Mr. Ross.
Good morning. Thank you. So, Dr. Atkins, Board Attorney Bruno to the board. My name is Frederick Ross. I'm the Director.
Okay, I was just, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure we had a quorum present, and I do see some additional board members that have logged in, so we do have a quorum at this point.
Yes, we do. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so again, Frederick Ross, Director of Procurement Services. Daryl, you can bring up the presentation. And we're here wanting to present the results of our research and feedback we've gone out to the public regarding our construction RFQ process and discuss some of the proposed changes. I know throughout the year when we do these construction solicitations, you know, we receive feedback. I know Dr. Atkins and, you know, some board members may receive feedback from the vendors or community. Community, and, you know, this is our opportunity to make those changes. Yes, we, you know, do do continuous improvement throughout making small tweaks. But, you know, there's opportunities like this where we don't have any construction solicitations on the street or currently being advertised, that we can kind of take the time to really go into deeper discussions with the community about the process and make those changes while nothing is currently advertised. You can go to the next slide, Daryl. So really, we're looking at this continuing improvement process that we, you know, do, you know, all around, but, you know, definitely more specifically right now on this construction RFQ process. Next slide really talks about the timeline. Prior to some of the, you know, the board members are joining, this solicitation process for RFQs was housed in the Operations Department. So they executed these construction-related RFQs, and the decision was made to bring these over to procurement based on some of the best practices and the other procurement-related items, solicitations that our department does. So back then, Susan Millay was in my position as Director of Procurement, and her, along with Tracy Adams, Procurement Coordinator, went out and, you know, sought to revamp this RFQ process. All those yellow fireworks you see on that, on that slide are all areas where they actually interfaced and touched bases with the public, receiving public feedback in the development of this process. Now, fast forward to the end there on March twenty seventeen is when the first solicitation was done. And now, fast forward to July first, now we've done forty-one solicitations using this RFQ process. And then moving to where we are now is in that feedback loop. So now we're, we're, we're having a little break, and we're taking a look at our process, looking to optimize and improve the process. Again, reaching out, giving that public feedback. Now, next slide, Daryl. So here we are now in, in the feedback loop of, again, you know, highlighting going out and receiving that feedback from the public. Attended several Construction Advisory Committee meetings, met with, with some contractors. You know, also, you know, did our due diligence in researching procurement methods, researching practices, reaching out to those other school districts and agencies, determining how, how they handled some of these issues, and then developing our recommendations. You know, definitely wanted to make sure everything passes the legal test. So had it reviewed by legal. On July first, we presented the same presentation you're looking at now to the Construction Advisory Committee, uh, uh, members. Also joining that meeting were many members from the public. I believe the total number I saw the attendees get to were about seventy-eight attendees on the Zoom meeting. So a lot of, lot of interest from the community on this. And now here we are today presenting this to the board. Next slide, please. Keep on going, one more. So now we're really going to deep a little more into what the feed, what was the feedback that we heard? Kind of where we currently stand in this area, and then what is our proposed recommendations? So one of the big areas of feedback was in vendor participation. The public communicated to us that it was important to them that we utilize local vendors, that possibly points be awarded to local vendors, you know, specifically looking at those who are in the area, not only physically but have staff here, have, you know, been providing services in this area and are considered a local vendor. One of the tough parts about this is defining what, what does a local vendor mean? And we even proposed that question to the Construction Advisory Committee a couple of times, and got, even within that committee, got a, a wide array of answers on what is considered local. So that was kind of the feedback we have. Currently, we do give some points. We give three points during the proposal stage for vendors who are within the two-hundred-mile radius, but no other points and no clear definition currently of, of local vendor. So what we are recommending here at the bottom is we would like to propose adding four points to the proposal stage and then also four points to the presentation stage for local vendor participation. You would be qualified to obtain this local participation points based on a definition that we're adopting. This definition that you see there, it, it actually comes from Lee County. So it's a slightly edited version of Lee County's local participation definition, and it defines a local vendor as either A or B. So A, their, their principal place of business is located within the Lee County boundaries. Or they have done business on a regular basis to the district for the previous, for consecutive three years, and they also have the personnel and equipment and materials within the boundary of Lee County to sufficiently do the, conduct the project and do the work. And, you know, we feel this was a good definition. You know, the A, you know, definitely if you, if you're here and this is your principal place of business, you're definitely a local vendor. But we also have vendors who, you know, have made significant investment to this area, to this local area, have locations here, have significant amount of employees here in this, in this, in this location, and have been providing us services or products for several years. And we feel, we felt like they should also be, have the opportunity to get these points as well. And we feel like we've done that within that letter B, that option B. The slight difference that we have made from the Lee County definition is, Lee County definition says five years. We tweaked that with three years. We felt like given our half-cent sales tax and the amount of construction work we foresee coming within the next years, that there will be other vendors that will, may come to the area and may begin doing business with us. In three years from now, they would be capable of obtaining that local participation points if they continue to do business with us and they continue to invest their personnel and their materials here in this area. So that is our recommendation for local vendor preference. I may pause right there just to see if there's any questions about that one, because that was definitely one of the bigger focal points within the feedback we received.
So, um. Yes, so, and B isn't up, that slide's not up there anymore. But for, for B, I believe it said three years and personnel in, in county. Why did you decide to put the "and" there versus the "or" for B? Because wouldn't that preclude anyone new that didn't have a home base? A home base in Lee County?
So for, 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 for letter B, it, it says any person firm whose principal place of bus, or excuse me, who's, who has provided business services to the school district on a regular basis consecutive three years, and that has "and" that has the personnel and equipment and materials located within.
Right, so what, so what I'm saying is by putting an "and" instead of "or" in, in that verbiage, you're precluding anyone new who would be, you know, it might be a larger firm that has offices in Naples, Fort Myers, Punta Porta, what, you know, a list, and, and they still operate locally, and they provide a good value for us, but they wouldn't be getting the extra points. So what I'm saying is by putting an "and" instead of an "or" there, you're really hampering anybody new coming into the area that does have at least a main office here.
So it was our thought that when, so if a vendor was, was doing business with us consecutively for three years, but let's say they weren't in within, they weren't in this area, we don't feel like that vendor should get local preference points. But because of not having that "and," right? So they haven't invested locally with personnel, locally with equipment, locally with, with materials. They've really just come here and started doing business out of their non-local office. So I think what you're, what you're speaking of is exactly what we are, are in, was is to lower that, that number of years it takes you. But yes, you still need to come here, invest in personnel here, invest in materials and equipment here, and be established here enough for us to consider you local.
Okay, but you're not considered local if you're a larger firm that has offices in many cities throughout Florida?
Cool, unless you meet that B, part B part correct, you would not be considered.
Right, as, as I'm saying, if, if you haven't done work with Lee County, even if you, you have a presence here, but you're not home-based in, let's say, Cape Coral or Fort Myers, get the edge of points, right?
Correct, correct. And I think that was the feedback we were receiving from the, you know, vendors that they want that local preference points, but they want the vendors that get it to be here, either A, be here, or B, significantly invested in this community with personnel, with equipment, with materials. And I think this, this, the way this definition that Lee County has put in kind of addresses that.
Okay, but they still, they, they still need to have been, for B, they still need to have been already contracted with us.
Correct, for three, at least three consecutive.
Okay, and that's, and that's what I'm questioning there. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Patrica. Mr. Patrica?
Sorry, I couldn't find my mute button. Okay, so I'm confused a little bit about why we moved away from the, let me pull it up. Why did we move away from vendors should have an office within two hundred miles from one year prior to solicitation? Why did we not adopt that?
So within two hundred miles conducting business within the last six months, actually, that is what is currently in place and has been, we've been doing that for, I guess, solicitation one through, through the forty-one that we're on now. So that is current, where we award three points in the proposal stage for office within two hundred miles conducting similar business for the last six months. The feedback we received from the community was that an out-of-town company could come in seven months, seven months, set up, set up a shell office, no one's in that office, no equipment, no material, no personnel, and be awarded those three points, and that is not truly a local business. And that is the feedback we received from our, our community, hence us looking into this, this area.
So I think I might share some of Ms. Vaughn's concerns here, because, you know, if we have a, a local office of a national company or corporation that's located here and employs hundreds of people here in Lee County, I feel that they are disadvantaged if they haven't been awarded a contract by the district in the past three years. And, you know, the, the construction of new schools is relatively new still, so that some of those companies who are here, again, sending their kids to our schools, spending the money that they earn here in Lee County economy, might be disadvantaged by this. Can you offer me any, any assurance that that won't be the case?
So, so first of all, these are, these are four participation points. So, you know, this is out of a score of a hundred on both, on both of these stages. So we're, we're talking about four percentage of the, of the points. So definitely a qualified consultant from out of town would still have plenty of opportunities to score and, you know, and possibly be awarded on this, on this solicitation. You know, currently, there has been a wardy who's, who's outside of those, of that two-hundred-mile range and did not receive those three points. So it is possible to still be awarded without the local participation. Secondly, you know, again, this is kind of, you know, back to the, the public feedback, is that the desire for the community for these, this half-cent sales tax and the construction dollars that we're probably choosing to stay within this area. So, so that big company that comes in and sets up shop with a, with an office that's, you know, not as staff, that doesn't have significant amount of equipment and personnel, being able to achieve and gain that local preference points, I guess it somewhat defeats the purpose of having this local participation and giving those points if just anyone can get it. So what it is that we're looking for, for a vendor to get these points if they're not from the area, is, is that commitment of not only a commitment to us as a district of, hey, yes, we've been doing business with you for a while, being at least three years, but we're, we're also, we're also here and we're also invested. But I do not think that these four points diminish the competition and diminish the ability from a national firm with the, with excellent qualifications of being able to come in and be successful.
Right, I'm, I'm, it, it's not the, it's not the national firm that I'm concerned about. It's the national firm that has an established office with employees who spend their tax money in Lee County and send their children to Lee County schools who don't have an established relationship for three years with the district. Those are the ones, those are the ones I'm concerned about. Like, what does a regular relationship mean? Or providing services on a regular basis for three consecutive years? Again, how long have we been constructing schools with half any sales tax? Not very long. So, so what companies will be left out of this four-point advantage even though they're well-established here in Lee County? That, that's really my only concern. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna just go in here with one global question before we move on with Ms. Jordan Gittens and Jevanelli. So are we saying then by this that we are assured that all goods and services that we might need are available locally? Or, or is local, can local be expanded to stay okay if they're in the United States versus based outside of the country somewhere? I mean, because I just don't see that there's no limitation to this. And, and I agree with Ms. Patrica about the clarity of, like, what exactly does that regular basis mean? You know, have they worked for us once or twice, or do we know they have been in the area? And maybe one of our contractors has.
And maybe one of our contractors has subcontracted with them. So I'm just not sure that we're not limiting ourselves with this local vendor participation. And and again, like Ms. Patrica said, we have national companies that have satellites in here in Florida or nearby who are putting their kids in our schools and are spending their money locally. So and contributing to our sales tax base. So that's just my question and comment. And, okay, then, Mr. Ross, did you have something?
Okay, so no, just to kind of respond to your question. No, I I I think just in this conversation, we're seeing the difficulty even the construction advisory committee in determining a true definition for what if a vendor um and 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 has really been the biggest hurdle in this whole process. And, you know, one of the things, like I said, we 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 kind of piggyback the Lee County definition um because it did give some options. Um, definitely open and, you know, to relooking at this, the definition and and and, you know, editing as you see fit. Um, but again, just, you know, really coming from the 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 public feedback that we received. And I think even, you know, from one of our recent school architecture RFQs, I think even the board received feedback when, you know, when a, I think a St. Petersburg area architecture won. And, you know, we we heard from the community wanting to keep the absent sales tax local. So this, that is why we look to to establish this definition. Now, lessening and lessening it to allow kind of more, uh, I guess, other firms that aren't by by this current definition as average local, you know, it does, it does open it up for for more competition, but it also lessens the fact that it would have for our our local business, our local vendors that currently meet this this definition. So.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. Um, from my understanding, well, I like the word and because I do believe that the companies do need to be invested in the community. And this does not stop other businesses. Of course, if we don't have anyone to fit that need, then we would expand that that search uh to possibly have those other people come in. But I know for a fact that we here in the county had this take place where a company did come in and our tax money had gone to them and they had promised all these jobs locally that was going to take place, high paying jobs. The company then moved into Cuyahoga County instead of Fort Myers, and most of the people who they brought down from their company after they were awarded wind up moving into Cuyahoga County and their kids went to school in Cuyahoga County. So I I do really think that that is important for us to make sure that we are looking locally. And if we have the ability and the the manpower to make that happen, I think that's great because we need to build the economy here in Lee County and put our people to work. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Gittens?
Yes, thank you. I definitely want to echo what Ms. Jordan just said. And we're looking at the difference in someone who is actually homesteaded in this county and has their children and their family and everything established here and has had that opportunity for quite some time. And how then, I mean, we know, you know, in econ in economics that the small businesses are the lifeblood of an economy, that we don't give opportunities to those small businesses and local businesses first. Um, I I have a concern because a large company that's say national, um, it's nothing for them to have the wherewithal and finances to move someone here. It doesn't work out, then they move them somewhere else. But these folks aren't here. They are businesses here. They are homesteaded here. And I just, I I really believe that we need to um look at and and this, this actually goes out further into the minority community as well. Because if you don't have the same financial structure to be able to do the things that a large company comes in and does, then where where do you, where are your goals, where are your visions achieved? So I I just really think we need to look at the purpose behind this is affecting those groups and and local companies.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Um, Ms. Jevanelli?
Thank you. Actually, I was on the um construction advisory when all this came about. The vendors, these changes are actually what they came from the construction advisory. I mean, they had in-depth conversations wanting to make sure that they the the absent uh sales tax stayed in Lee County as much as possible. So this really just gives an advantage to our local vendors. But I was gonna, one of the things that Ms. Gittens just brought up, that they also brought up was um minority vendors. So that was to get extra points. I was gonna ask Mr. Ross, did we implement something with that? And I didn't, I was looking through that. I didn't really see that. So I think those were important issues that the construction advisory committee brought up and I and um and they worked very hard on this. Um, and I think this just key, this is just a little extra advantage um for our local vendors that work and live in Lee County. And and I think it's really important that we patronize our 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 local people. I believe in loyalty. That's one of the things that's very important to me personally. So I like that, seeing that the district is is thinking the same way um and working the same way. So I think it's um really important to acknowledge all the work they did. And because they they gave this a lot of thought. This wasn't just one or two meet, two two meetings. It was several over a a lengthy period of time, actually. So um, I I thank you for actually pulling it together and and making it happen. But I do, Mr. Ross, I do have a question regarding the minority vendors getting extra points as well.
Yes, and next actually on our next line.
Great. I didn't get there. Thank you.
All right.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Jevanelli. Uh, Mrs. Morgan?
So uh, this, the current construction advisory, remember, I'm gonna weigh in a little bit. Um, and I've only sat, I only sat in on this meeting. This was the very first meeting that I've been in since I was on the construction advisory back in 2016, 2017, when the board decided to make some major changes in the structure of its construction bidding process. And and essentially, we're having the same conversation we had at that time, which is that, you know, which is more important, local participation or price? And at that time, the decision was made, the price was the uh was really the relevant factor. And now, essentially, what's coming around is that there's a strong feeling in the in the community that since these, the the dollars that are funding these projects are largely coming from uh local households and not coming from the state budget, that that money needs to be spent locally. I I have to say, I, so this meeting probably went almost two hours. And as Mr. Ross said, and by the way, Mr. Ross, you did an outstanding job managing a meeting with like 60, 70 people in participating on Zoom. There there was very little conversation about this particular aspect of the proposal. Mr. Ross has two more. One has to do with supplier diversity and the other has to do with points. Um, it's the supplier diversity, the minority and small business that was essentially the conversation when we were engaging with the broader community. That's their big concern. And so I want, I do want to make another comment when Mr. Ross talks about uh the diversity plan, because I think there is something there that the board should be discussing that came up. So those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And next up, Ms. Vaughn?
Thank you. Um, okay, two two things. First, I I want to respond to what Ms. Morgan just said. I I think it's important, um, she she said that several years ago, it was local or price and and price came up on top. But I would add experience as as well. And actually, the way this is written, it's not just four points extra that the local businesses get, but it would be eight points, four points to proposal and four points for presentation. Is, am I correct, Mr. Ross?
Correct, that is, that's correct.
Okay, so that's pretty happy. Yeah, and and I'm still really stuck on on that B that um that precludes new people coming in with satellite offices. And and I and Ms. Patrica as well, we were referring to national, but it it may not even be national, it may be statewide or or a region or something like that. And I don't know how to say what I'm gonna say next without making it sound like I'm prejudiced against local businesses, which I'm not. I think it's important to engage our our community. But the bottom line is, we want to have the price, good fair price. We also want to have people with with experience. And I I think the fact that it 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 shouldn't lower the um the advantage of company if they um do have a satellite office. Now, I'm not talking about just, you know, let's stick one guy in a little office somewhere and call it our office. I I'm talking about kinds of things Ms. Patrica mentioned where where there is, you know, because we we also do need to look at the benefit of some of the larger companies perhaps that that come in and establish um an office here and maybe in time establish a base here because we need people as well. We can support our local economy through providing jobs for people. And I I just see, I I I think this is a big jump in the number of points that we award to the local businesses. Of course, local vendors that talk about this are are going to lean toward, yeah, let's keep it local. But we we need to consider wider issues. And and I would focus quite a bit on price and experience and the fact that um we might be providing, or we probably would be providing jobs to many of our people here in Lee County that that need jobs. Um, it would be an expansion. So those those are my comments on that.
If I could, just add a a couple of things, and this is coming in response to several of the comments. Um, so first, um, some of the feedback that we received from um our contractors was that, you know, hey, some of those larger national firms um in the past came in when when times were good. You know, they won the bids, and then when times went bad, they were gone and they weren't, and we were the vendors that were here to to serve you. So that was kind of some of the feedback in response to some of those national vendors setting up a satellite office. Secondly, um, this is a RFQ, a request for qualifications. Um, price is not part of the um evaluation process. Um, experience, past projects, safety, innovation, other personnel, things like that um are what are are evaluated through this qualification process. And the price is negotiated in the negotiation phase. And if we're unequipped to negotiate with that on top ranked vendor, we have the right to continue moving down until we are able to negotiate a a price. Um, so just wanted to make those two points.
So then that leads me to um my question about some considerations. So are there points awarded for business ratings? You know, like you said, the experience, the prior projects and the outcome and and the follow-up. So is that also part of the consideration for awarding points to to businesses? And, you know, about 35% of our sales tax money comes from tourism and visitors. And sometimes that leads to people, uh, you know, moving to the area and and establishing businesses, especially when times are good. So I think um what, looking at the fact that the local economy is important and the quality of our project's completion and the assurance of delivery is important. Um, you know, I was just wondering what what kind of weight then is given to firms that uh specialize in, say, building a school and and, you know, have the assets and the equipment and the people ready to deliver?
Right, so some of the other criteria here that we um evaluate in are, you know, past experience. So looking at their similar related projects to the project being advertised and that. Some of that, we definitely check on client references. They're requested to submit three references um um in that, and that reference provides feedback. Also, um, things like their project approach, you know, so these are, you know, new innovative schools we're building now. So what is going to be their approach um and and the resources they have to develop? Um, you know, the this new innovative type school. Financial and litigation history are looked are looked at. What, as for their their financial records and and their um litigation history to to understand, things like that. And then also, we look at their district projects, we look at their, um, how far they are from the site on that current local part. So there's definitely some um evaluations of of the specific vendors, financials, their experience, um, kind of the the full circle of what goes into evaluating a contractor and choosing a contractor, you know, for, you know, 80 million to 100 million dollar project.
Right, so then all of that information would be included in their proposal and presentation?
Correct, correct. That would be what we request they they submit.
Great, thank you. Uh, Mrs. Morgan?
So, uh, thank you. I was gonna suggest, Mr. Ross, that perhaps you send uh school board members the point system for the two different phases of the bid process so they can see how points are assigned to business experience, et cetera, with the district. Because again, we are talking about four points in each stage. So there are another 96 points that go to other things. What else was I gonna say? Oh, this this, the the comments about big business being uh national businesses being shut out. In fact, what has really happened in Lee County is that larger companies have seen the opportunity for construction here. And what they have done in order to capitalize on those opportunities is they have, in fact, created offices in this area. And they do imply that uh employ locally. And, you know, creating uh, giving the opportunity for new businesses to come in with the argument that they'll create new employment isn't isn't really uh an argument because there's only a certain amount of employment. The question is, who's going to employ those people? And so it doesn't matter whether it's a national firm bidding that's never worked here before um or a local firm. Essentially, it's the same job and same requirement. So I I think the real, I think um what has happened, in fact, given the previous requirements, is that we have put some firms, and you can answer this question, Mr. Ross, for me. Have we not put some firms in the position of having to create satellite offices locally so that they are better positioned to employ locally?
No, no.
No? Okay, can't make that argument. All right, got it. But I do, I I do think that um I I I I feel strongly that this is the way to go. We're only. We're only increasing it by one point from where it used to be, right? It's just a one point increase. It used to be three points with different criteria, now it's four points with this particular set.
Yep, just one correction of that, it used to be three points only in the first proposal stages. Now it's four points in the proposal and the presentation.
Got it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan, Ms. Gittens, and then Mrs. Jevanelli.
Okay, thank you, and thank you very much for this presentation. I I just have a brief thing to say. I believe that part of the concept behind this was to give opportunity. I've heard two words that really are the ultimate of this whole thing, and that's experience and opportunity. And it's kind of like the chicken and the egg situation. The large companies that come in, someone along the line gave them an opportunity as a small company to get the experience and to grow. If we never give that opportunity to local, smaller businesses to get the experience to grow, then they are always going to be at a different level from the larger companies. And I, in my mind, the whole concept of it is to equalize the playing field, to provide equity for everyone to participate in the economy. And I just, I I don't, I don't think we need to sacrifice experience and opportunity. Just think about those two words. When do you give someone an opportunity to get the experience? I mean, that's across, we're in education, that's the whole thing. If you don't give someone an an opportunity to get educated, then they can't do what comes after. So that's my soapbox, and thank you.
Okay, Ms. Gittens, thank you, and this this is Jevanelli.
And I actually, that's well said, Mrs. Gittens, I actually agree with you. Also, it's really important to note that that we're asking businesses to invest in our our community, and that's really important because investing in our community will only increase our economy. So it's it's a win win for us. We're investing in our local people and they're investing in our children. So it, you know, it just works, it's just a, I think it's a great, it's great that we're going to give this a little advantage to vendors. And I think it's just, it's very important that we do this. And think about it and with the big picture of how this will increase our economy and and keeping our our dollars local. So thank you, that's all I have, my comment.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Jevanelli. Mr. Ross, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and proceed because I know you have several slides left and we are over time already. And we want to have an opportunity then for some discussion after all of your information has been presented. So I'm turning the floor back over to you, thank you.
Okay, and I will try to, I think I'll spend a little time on this next slide and then the remaining ones would go pretty quickly. The next slide is supplier diversity. So on the feedback we received from the community that they wanted to increase the participation of of vendors or minority vendors, even more specifically, those that employ minorities from the community. They wanted us to, you know, make sure we're doing some verification and follow up on, you know, currently doing presentations and doing the RFQ, we request their supplier diversity plan. And, you know, they just wanted us to follow up to ensure that those firms were following through on the promises that they made. Currently, we do not award any points for minority employees nor minority participation. And we, we being procurement, don't do any enforcement or or verification of construction project spin once that project gets started. So looking at those, that feedback, you know, our first intent and desire was to be able to award a point for minority participation. And just to give some sort of definition in terms of minority businesses that typically includes racial minority, women owned businesses, veteran owned businesses, disabled owned businesses as well. I think I'm forgetting one, but, you know, encompasses all of those related businesses. So during our legal review, we and and talked with our internal legal staff, it was determined that it was not, we were not able at this time to award points for minority participation. Our our staff felt that right now it is highly protestable. It'll be difficult to defend and there is a somewhat a a longer term process that needs to be in place in order to be able to award those minority points. And that process includes conducting, I guess, the primary part of that process is conducting what's called a disparity study in the area. That is a long process, a two to three year process, some estimates, estimates on pricing or cost on that is anywhere from, you know, a hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars in cost. And we are, you know, ready to meet and start the discussion on working with some of our other local agencies and possibly moving down the the road to that process of conducting a disparity study. But with that not in place at this time, our legal staff was uncomfortable with awarding points. And the last thing we want to do is award, you know, award some points on for minority businesses and it become then comes protested and slows down a a the construction of a of a project. So so we will not at this time be awarding points for minority employee, for vendors with minority employees nor awarding points for minority participation. What we are going to do or what we can do, we will definitely start better follow up and enforcement of the supply diversity plans that are presented by the awarded vendor, working with construction, working with the vendor for reporting out on what that minority expenditure expenditure and activities is on an ongoing basis. And then that last bullet, I think, is is pretty significant in that during the negotiation of the contract, we put work language into our contract that A, that indicates our our intent and our initiative to support local businesses and local, excuse me, minority businesses. But also in their challenge the vendor to set goals and set reporting and compliance structures and us push that through the negotiation process and encourage them to to increase that percentage and that goal in the negotiation process. And even as further as, you know, them providing us as the procurement department with their 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 bids that they're going out the quote for when it's time to for them to get quotes. We can also advertise to our minority businesses that that we've identified and and them utilizing the FB, the FGCU Small Business Development Center to reach out and identify small businesses that are local that they can send their bids to. So us also participating in the in the contractor's bidding process to ensure that minority business activity are are being executed. So as as Ms. Morgan said, this was a a big discussion. You know, since local participation was awarded the points, you know, they were definitely satisfied there. This was kind of one area of disappointment that we weren't able to go ahead and award these points for minority businesses. But we we do feel like we've added some things into the contract to increase participation and and for to working to to possibly be able to award points in the future. Next slide, and I do these last one pretty quickly so we can do the discussion. This next one on the evaluation and scoring was another big discussion point in in our meeting. The the community desire that we increase the number of years of experience evaluated. At current times, we're evaluating seven years of experience, they wanted that as high as ten as ten to twelve years experience and some other things evaluated. We did find based on SREF, which is our state guidelines for education facilities, that for CMs only, that's construction managers, that there is a requirement for that to be five years. So initially, we we set all of them to five years to be consistent in that July first meeting we had with the public, received a lot of feedback from the architects and the non-construction managers that, hey, we think that that is only required for the CMs and we don't think that should apply for us. So we have gone back and that what you see there in green is what we've changed based on public feedback since the July first meeting where we will only apply that requirement to the CMs and the architects and the other trades, engineers, building officials who continue to be at the seven years experience. And we felt that is good, it's definitely better to evaluate more more recent experience than than further experience in the past, you know, especially when you get into that twelve and fifteen year range. You begin to wonder are the same employees who did that project even still employed by that company anymore? So we feel like it's definitely a best practice and and more effective of a of a shorter range in in that seven year, seven to five year range is evaluated. So that is kind of the change that was made for past experience. Daryl, next slide? Um, you know, looking at the what goes on in the presentation, you know, some vendors may comment that some vendors were using more resources or spending more money for their presentation or inviting subcontractors and material providers. We did evaluate that, we looked at, we saw what other districts were doing, we did not make a change in this area. We wanted to, you know, really allow vendors to put their best foot forward and put their best team in the valuation and the presentation to be evaluated. So we did not make any changes in this area. Next slide? These were some requested changes in the, Daryl, next slide? Okay, okay. So yes, we were looking at just some changes in the presentation and 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 information given. Benders wanted to, you know, maybe get their written responses before they started a presentation or or they wanted to, you know, kind of actually receive opposite feedback. Previously, when when Susan and her team looked at it, you know, they they didn't want the 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 points going from presentation to to me going from proposal to presentation to count. Now they're kind of saying the opposite, so we received feedback on both sides. We feel as best that we we keep it the way it is right now and have each, both the presentation and the proposal totally separate and and those points do not carry over. So no change for this slide. This was an area that we did make a committing to make a change, looking at the valuation team. Just, you know, some of the feedback was that, you know, there were too many non-construction specific employees on the team. And we do like to do that because we, you know, we feel like, you know, in a given person in the in the building of a new school, you know, the principal definitely has some knowledge to add to the valuation team. IT has some safety and security, our food service director. So there's many different positions around within the district, administrative levels that could evaluate and provide feedback to a new school construction project. But we did hear them and we will commit to attempting to try to keep at least fifty percent of the evaluation team subject matter experts in the in construction area. So they're either in the construction maintenance or the planning department, which work closer to those areas. So that is a a change we are looking to make. One we're not making, they wanted to re look at using advisor committee members on evaluation teams. And it already says it is just too difficult to prove that there is no conflict of interest between those committee members and potential vendors that are are submitting for that that RFQ. So no change there. Next slide? Here's another area where we did make some a change, district projects. So this is an area where we seek to somewhat spread the amount of projects that vendors awarded. So when you submit, we ask for you to submit the the projects you you've done within a certain, the last period of time with the district. And the more projects you've done, the less points you get, the less projects you've done, the more points you get. And that's, you know, a way to, what we call equity of work and and spreading some work around. And the feedback was, hey, you're doing it with two points in the proposal stage. You need, you you should also do it in in the present presentation stage. And we've added those two points to that stage as well. So another area we we address the the public feedback. Next slide? Here, this is more documents that are submitted during the RFQ, you know, just more them asking us to keep them on file as long as possible so that I have to keep resubmitting the same same documents. You know, there's times when we have two, three, four solicitations out at the same time. So they're submitting these over and over again, it can get a little tedious. So we we will be keeping some files on on file for for a year on those financials that I have to keep submitting those financials. We're going to continue keeping references, references on file for a year. We're also looking to adopt some e-sourcing tools. So these documents will be submitted electronically in the future, which will hopefully lessen the 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 work for them in this area. Next slide? I think this is the last one on our, that's, you know, really just kind of, hey, they wanted us to give the feedback in a town hall meeting type scenario, which we did in the construction advisory, even though it was on Zoom during during due to the COVID. I think we were able to really get that town hall filled and everyone was able to give their feedback verbally during the meeting. Kind of a text during the meeting, using the Zoom. Or they were still given the opportunity both before and after the meeting to email me or my coordinator directly with their feedback. So we definitely feel like we addressed that. And then in the end of that negotiations, just making that run a little more smoother and that we have some legal staff to assist us with those and they can be more engaged in that negotiation process. We feel like we can make that more efficient. So that concludes the, all the feedback and all the different recommendations that we've made based on those feedback, based on that feedback and, you know, definitely open to some more discussion on that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ross, for that, for sharing your expertise and your professionalism. At this time, I'm going to call on Ms. Patrica, who I know has to leave the meeting shortly, so Ms. Patrica?
Can I actually, I saw Ms. Morgan's hand go up shortly after the minority business thing came up and I would assume she's going to provide some feedback on the construction advisory committee meeting, yes, Ms. Morgan? So can I have hear her comments before I ask my question?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so Mrs. Morgan and then Ms. Patrica.
Yeah, what I really wanted to say was Brian Williams has made it clear to the construction advisory committee and to the people participating in the meeting that given his experience in Miami Dade with this disparity study, that he will be working aggressively to pursue this. So I don't want people to think that we can't, we really can't do it now, we're not in a position to do it. But there is a definite commitment on the part of the district to proceed with that study, and Brian has experience with it. And I'll 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 pass it on to Ms. Patrica. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Morgan, Ms. Patrica.
And I think that was really my question, with regard to the disparity study, do we have a commitment by Dr. Atkins that we will complete this as soon as possible? When can it be completed? And then once it's completed, can it, will it be legally permissible, based on the outcome, of course, of the study? Will it be legally permissible for us to award points on the basis of either minority employment or minority ownership of the business or any of that?
Well, first of all, let me say in terms of commitment, you know, absolutely. I think we're very, very fortunate to have Mr. Williams on board because of his experience over at Miami Dade, specifically doing this type of work. You know, that's not, that's not work that you're often going to come across as somebody who who literally has experience in this area. I do think, as I understand it, and I'm not an attorney and don't play one on TV, as I say, we have to have this disparity study in place. Once we do have that in place, then awarding those points is something then awarding those points is something that's permissible. And um, you know, I look toward Mr. Ross and and make sure that I'm correct in that statement. Uh, in terms of time, uh, that is something I, I do not know off the top of my head. Uh, I want to say, uh, Mr. Ross, I don't know if you know the answer to that one either, but um, I, I know it, it takes some significant time, but we're not talking about years and years from now. We're.
Well, correct. Um, in my discussion with Brian, I guess, I want to say maybe a year, two years, tops, kind of timeframe in terms of completing this.
That was, yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was thinking as well.
All right. So Dr. Atkins, could you, could you sort of calendar this for follow-up with the board, you know, in six months? And then again, six months after that, so you can provide us, um, I'll calendar it as well, but so you can provide us with updates as to where we stand on this study. Jason, thank you. All right. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica, and drive safely. Uh, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. Um, and I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Ross, I'm not sure what slide it was on. Uh, I was trying to figure out with the, I know that you were saying we cannot um, hold them accountable for not complying with, if they say they're going to hire X amount of minorities, whatever that looks like, women, whatever. Okay. Um, but what I have seen in the past, the same company that I had spoken about that moved to Collier, um, they had the same agreement of hiring local um, people for these high wages jobs where they then came in and hired all the, the majority of the local people that were hired in were hired in as a minimum wage, basically. So they met their goal in the participation portion of it because they were hiring minorities, but they were not hiring them. They were bringing in their own from out of state for the uh, higher positions. So I don't know if that um, how we monitor their goals that they're setting, because their goals are whatever they deem to be. I just wanted to put that out there.
Yes. So yes, that is kind of um, part of uh, of, of the feedback is, you know, when they, when the vendors come in, we do ask them in the presentation for their supplier diversity plan currently. And you know, you typically they um, discuss, you know, how they advertise their bids, maybe some of the subcontractors that are minority that they currently um, work with. Um, but once they're awarded, um, procurement, uh, there's currently not a process in place for procurement to follow up and say, hey, did you use that? Um, that subcontractor, that minority subcontractor, did you discuss in the presentation and did you advertise the way you said you were going to advertise? So that is what they're looking to do is just put something in place to follow up, to ensure that they're doing those, those things that, um, that they say they're going to do. So yes, somewhat similar to, to um, that situation where, you know, they, they propose something. Now who's following up to com- uh, make sure they comply?
But even if we do, uh, if I may, even if we do have the follow-up with them, there really is nothing that we can do to enforce that. Um, is there?
Well, we, we, we will be putting that in their actual contract. So
Okay.
Discuss further with Brian, what kind of actions, you know, we can actually take. But yes, it will be part of the actual contract.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it, Ms. Jordan? Okay, let me just get back over here to my little blue hands. Okay, Ms. Gittens, then Ms. Vaughn, and then finally, Mrs. Morgan.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, few members have already brought up my um, interest, Mr. Ross, in the despair and superintendent in the, in the disparity studies. Um, and the question I wanted to bring about is about working with the smaller local vendors. I've heard you all say before that there is um, training or opportunities for them to um, gather the information that they don't have. And, and I, I give the example of the presentation phase of this. It does count for points, but I may have a business and I know how to build buildings, but my presentation needs work. So are we equalizing that playing field by offering through the district opportunities to educate uh, smaller business owners as to this is how you can do this, this is whatever. This, we are in the business of education. Thank you.
So yes, I appreciate that question. And yes, we do, um, we do have activities and, and things in place to assist those vendors. So I think the first and foremost is, um, once a solicitation is over, we actually encourage uh, contractors to request the um, evaluation documents, request the, the winner, the, the awarded vendors evaluation and presentation documents to, you know, see how they did it and see what the evaluation uh, team said about, um, you know, your, your particular um, presentation. And then once you review that, please give us a call. Um, um, my procurement coordinator, Tracy Adams and I, we meet with uh, these construction vendors, uh, once uh, uh, so solicitations are complete. Um, you know, give them uh, feedback based on what the um, evaluation team um, had stated. Uh, any feedback we may see from our procurement standpoint. And um, you know, definitely try to encourage them and give them areas of, and opportunities of improvement. Um, and even more so, we uh, we request of our evaluation team, when they're filling out these um, evaluation forms, don't just put eight and ten and five, put why you gave that information. Um, that, uh, with the purpose of the vendors to take a look and, and, and improving themselves. But in addition to that, in addition to that, we also have our vendor outreach event, you know, so when we bring vendors in, we have um, uh, our procurement staff and other uh, district staff set up to answer questions and provide feedback and and talk about process. And then we're also, um, know, um, the other resources available, available to them through the uh, small business development center at F G C U or Lee County Economic Development Center. So um, definitely we are here to assist those vendors.
Have you seen an increase? In other words, do they participate? Have you seen that that works with um, with vendors? And, and then I'm done. And thank you so much for your presentation.
Yes, yes. Most definitely. We, uh, we see that it works. Um, well, I guess going in, into a specific vendor, but you know, as they uh, come back and they learn and, you know, it's just like a, a student coming to the teacher and asking for that specific feedback, right? You know, they, they can, they see where they, they have the opportunity for improvement. They see where they you know, can, can do a better, better job. And then they make those improvements and, and you can see the results and and you know, some of them you just slowly, you know, they were in 10th place last time and now they're sixth and fourth. And you can kind of just see them moving up the rankings. So it, it, it is some value.
Thank you very much for that. Um, Mr. Ross. Okay, Ms. Vaughn. Mr. Mr. Ross, I'm, I'm looking at the slide that says evaluation team. And it says that currently it's optional. Um, and it talks about conflict of interest with respect to a specific R F Q. And it says, um, district recommendation, no change because it's difficult to prove no conflict of interest. Surely there's something, um, you know, I don't, I don't know if there are ethical codes that um, would come into play here where somebody, um, I mean, are, are there ethical, let me ask you this, are there ethical codes that would um, preclude members um, being on the evaluation team? For instance, um, one member's brother-in-law works in that company or, or or something like that, or even a financial interest um, in, in a company. How, how do we um, ensure that we don't have conflict of interest? I think that's, I think that's important and especially in Lee County, which is huge, but those of us who have lived here a while know it's really a small Lee County in, in many ways.
So yes, uh, so you know, first of all, the state does, um, you know, have uh, a, what is, what is called that? A code of ethics, um, that, that, that is followed. And we um, uh, we bring our, our current evaluation team. We, um, we do a training and in that training, um, they actually um, have to sign, uh, that they receive the training. Then that also that they do not have any conflict of interest for that given solicitation. Um, so we have had a time when we had a gentleman sit down and it was time to evaluate. And as soon as he saw the, the name of the vendor, he said, hey, my son-in-law, my son just got a job there. So I can't, you know, I can't participate. So yes, um, you know, so that is kind of our current method of, you know, just ensuring that the uh, evaluation team knows their role and knows, um, understands what conflict of interest is. And if they have one, um, it is, um, that they need to bring that forward.
Okay, that's, that's good. That's, I was assuming that there was an ethical code. Um, but just the wording that's, that's here in, in the presentation, when it says it's um, difficult to prove, um, that's, um, that's gave me, gave me pause in the fact that it said optional. Um, maybe it's in the recommendation, it should um, make reference to the ethical code.
So um, for that one, that is feedback is specifically for a, a um, like a non-district advisory committee type individual participating on the evaluation team. That was the feedback. And I guess our response to that is that it was too, it was too difficult to provide, uh, um, to prove that there's no conflict of interest. So right now, for example, on our construction advisory committee, you know, is, is primarily made up of individuals from a lot of the different vendors in our community. Uh, and even if not, they have some sort of tie to the, the construction community. So if one of those members were on any evaluation team, it would be very difficult to prove that of all, you know, sometimes we receive up to sixteen um, responses on a, on a construction uh, R F Q that not, that, that person has no conflict of interest with any of those uh, firms. It is, is just very difficult to prove. And again, it could lead to a protest that would slow down a, a project.
Okay. I, I, I just think it's because of what you, what you just said, that it's, that it's really important, um, the understanding of the importance of, of signing the ethical um, statement. And um, it, it, it seems to me that um, it, it could be a problem and it, um, it, that it could be a problem. I'll leave it at that. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Vaughn. Okay, Ms. Morgan, and then I just want to make us mindful of the time. It's twelve eighteen and we are scheduled till one o'clock and we do have good in the order. Okay, um, Mrs. Morgan, thank you.
Yeah. Well, I do want to say that at the conclusion of the diversity section, which was, it was a, a, quite a conversation. I think most people felt very comfortable, um, with one exception, um, moving forward. And that had to do with a fee that is charged uh, to, um, and help me out, Mr. Ross, because I'm not sure what that fee was, but it was sort of like, if you're going to participate, you have to pay a fee.
Um, I think is, is maybe that some of the um, authority certifications require
Maybe the
the fee process.
Yeah. It, it, is that something new? They were saying that it was, um, it, it was a big ask for small firms um, to pay that fee and that that would be an obstacle to their participation.
Yes, maybe. I think they were talking about bonding. So yes,
Oh, okay.
Construction contracts do um, uh, require, um, at, at, at certain thresholds require bonding. And certain, uh, small and minority businesses may not always qualify for the uh, bonding that is, that's needed. Um, so that is, is definitely always a hurdle for small and minority businesses looking to do larger scale construction projects.
Okay. So it's not a fee. It's um, it's a threshold, um, in terms of their ability to get uh, bonding. Okay. Um, then the only other comment I will make is that I, I, I think it's, it's important to note that this is an issue for the larger community, not just Lee County. And I think it's important to highlight the role of F G C U in setting up this small business advisory group. Um, obviously your work complements what they're doing and their work uh, helps you. So um, I, I just want to make it clear that I, I, I don't believe that it is our problem alone to educate. But this is really a community problem and is to the extent that the community is invested in small business development, minority development, everybody in the community benefits, not just the schools. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to add one comment on top of that, what Mrs. Morgan was um, referring to. Uh, along with F, uh, F G C U, we have the Lee County Economic Development Office, Lee Care's and our chambers who also offer support and education to our um, small businesses. So thank you for that. And I see Dr. Atkins' hand up.
Yeah, just Madam Chair, just want to follow up. Uh, we had a question about how long the disparity study would take. So I just uh, got some information from Mr. Williams. I thought I'd pass along to the group. Um, he said it, estimate would be between one and two years typically. The one they did in Miami did take uh, three years, but he did say that we could uh, actually expedite it if we wanted to here and do it in phases. And for example, you know, if our priority was uh, construction and maintenance, you know, we could uh, do that phase first and just focus on those areas and then do other, other areas as we uh, as we move forward. So I just wanted to provide the board with that info.
So that's good. And I think that would fit in with Mrs. Patrica's uh, suggestion for a six-month update. Um, Mr. Ross, did you have anything else?
No, I don't.
Okay. I see no other hands, the board members. So we want to thank you for your presentation and we will um, move on to good of the order.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
See.
Okay, so, um, it is twelve twenty-two, so we have a little more than a half hour. So let's begin with Mrs. Giovinelli.
Okay, I have dogs barking, so they're, they've been working on, on a home near me. So anyways, um, I only have a couple of things. Uh, it's regarding graduation. I sent out an email yesterday regarding graduation. Um, so this is actually for Dr. Atkins because now the ball is, is back in his court regarding having graduations at the stadium uh, downtown. Um, also I had some questions. I apologize. I hope you can hear me. If I yell at my dogs, it would just be worse to me trying to speak. Um, but anyways, uh, the, also parents are questioning, uh, receiving the diplomas if they don't attend any of the, any uh, of these, uh, the finalizations of, if there's going to be a drive-by or if we're going to actually get to have the graduations uh, downtown in the stadium downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Atkins, did you want to comment on that now?
Well, I can, yeah, I can comment on some of that now. Yes, I did get the uh, the email and we were reviewing it. Uh, the first thing I will say, we were in contact with the Department of Health um, this, today. And uh, they still caution us about any large gatherings. So I, I really would not be recommending a large gathering such as graduation at this time. Uh, the other thing that I, I really um, want the board to be aware of is that, you know, we are looking, as we said we would look, attending to evaluate when we're going to be opening schools. And um, you know, I have asked Dr. Pruitt to convene our calendar committee. And so I just want to let the board know that I am doing that, taking that action and looking at pushing back the start of school to, you know, at least two weeks, uh, potentially three weeks. And that the calendar committee will convene, I believe, on July twentieth. And they will be uh, beginning to look at some calendar options. So um, I think that in light of everything that we have going on right now with trying to prepare for reopening with the Department of Health's recommendation, uh, with the potential for pushing back the start of school, uh, that um, I don't think it would be prudent at this time to try to put um, another type of graduation ceremony in a stadium in place and do all the planning for that. Just being candid and honest with you as a board, I do think that the um, the drive-through is the best option that we can offer under the current conditions. And so that would be continuing my recommendation. I do appreciate your board members looking for other options. I understand this is very disappointing to, to our I understand this is very disappointing to, to our community, particularly our seniors. But I also think that we have to, uh, on the advice that we've received from the Department of Health and with everything that we, else that we have going on with the reopening of schools, I just think this is the, the best course of action at this time.
Thank you for that, um, Mrs. Morgan.
No, I'm not finished. I'm sorry, I'm not.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mrs. Giovinelli, continue.
Thank you. So, and so I just, I do really want to note that, um, on Saturday, that Verro is having their graduation, um, in this, in the stadium on Saturday, um, afternoon. So that, um, it's funny that the health department won't shut that down. So I, I think, um, I think that, uh, we have to really consider, I think we should be considering it. I think that, uh, with, since it's an outdoor event, I can, I understand this. I understand, um, the Hertz Arena. I never understood why we would even have committed to that to begin with, um, during the pandemic. So, uh, the outdoors was the best, um, solution. And I, you know, I have to apologize to the seniors and the community, um, because, uh, we had other, you know, we had many, um, um, Commissioner Pendergrass and, uh, Mayor Henderson were, um, worked very diligently to work together to offer that opportunity, um, to, uh, our students and families. So, um, I have to apologize, uh, to the community that, um, the superintendent made this decision, uh, without really talking to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Morgan?
Yes, so I actually sent an email to, um, Attorney Dupree Bruno and Dr. Atkins about this because it wasn't clear to me whether this was a private initiative or it was an initiative of the district. And honestly, um, it's my understanding that graduation is the responsibility of the superintendent, not the board. And so it wasn't clear to me when individual board members got involved in graduation planning, whether they were taking it on as a private venture as opposed to a public venture. So having just heard Mrs. Giovinelli's most recent comment, I assume that she was assuming the board was going to pass on the superintendent's, it, it was going to assign this responsibility to the superintendent. So anyway, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there. I'm a little confused about what's going on here. So I'm going to ask the board attorney to please weigh in. Dr. Atkins already has. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Attorney Bruno?
Thank you. Um, basically, a board member does have the opportunity to, um, send an email to the superintendent with any concerns that they may have. Obviously, it's the superintendent to make his determination, respond to it. And obviously, it's the superintendent's, um, purview to determine how graduations will move forward is based on his recommendation. I do know that, um, having privy to some of the conversations that occurred yesterday with the, um, pandemic team meeting, there were a lot of concerns with regards to graduation. There were a lot of concerns with regards to school opening. So I think that based on not only the Department of Health's recommendation with regards to the CDC's recommendation, as well as some of the other recommendations from staff, I believe that's how the superintendent arrived at his recommendation that we postpone the graduations and move forward with the, um, drive-throughs.
Thank you very much, Attorney Bruno. And I just wanted to say, I wasn't sure if this was, uh, specifically for Fort Myers High School only or if this was all of the high schools in our, um, district.
I, I can answer that. That way, it was, it was for all. And, and actually, um, Mr. Simmons had mentioned that he was going to, uh, come back around after, after the last conversation. So I was hopeful that, that we could revisit, uh, the graduation because people were very disappointed in a drive-by, um, graduation. And, and some are saying they can't attend and led into conversations that, uh, how would they get their diploma? And because, um, Mr. Simmons said it would be mailed, but now they're being told that they won't be mailed, that they have to pick them up. So, uh, if that could get, uh, some clarity on that, that would be really helpful. But yes, it was, the invitation was for all, uh, high schools to have it at the stadium and do it over the course of the, um, the couple of weekends, just like we were going to do at Hertz.
So, and then was there feedback from the high schools? Because, uh, I, I have not heard that in, in my area. And I also know that there have been some efforts here in the Cape to, uh, you know, have the prom and the picture-taking opportunity, which is not, um, to my knowledge right now, proceeding because again of our, our public health emergency situation. So I was just a little bit concerned about how this conversation was taking place without, uh, the superintendent and his staff and the high school principals. That, that's all. And Ms. Bruno?
The only other thing I was going to add in my list of, um, considerations is liability is always an issue. So with the number of students that we would have graduating, it's very different than some of the other schools that have a smaller, uh, graduating class. So that's something else that was taken into consideration as well.
Thank you very kindly. Uh, Ms. Gittens and then Ms. Giovinelli.
We got to put this button bigger. Anyway, um, a couple of things really quickly. One, um, on graduations, the drive-bys, I've been asked whether we had, we were told at one point about having the, the students that want to get out and take pictures and all that, that they would come into the building. There was discussion as to whether that would be in the building or on the field. And I thought the last thing we heard is that they would be on the field in some type of formation. So, um, Superintendent, can you answer that question for us?
Yes, you remember last time we had a discussion about that and there was a suggestion made that instead of going in the building, we do something outside. So, uh, we did take that recommendation and, uh, working individually with different high schools, they're going to set up at least some type of, of outdoor, uh, setting where the student can receive the diploma and get the picture with, with the school principal. Uh, doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be a stadium, but they're going to set up, you know, as I understand it, something nice so that picture-taking opportunity can take place.
Okay, thank you. The next thing is, um, for the superintendent as well, is the task force for reopening, is it done? Are they finished? Because some people were asking me, is the task force job over at this point? Will they be, you know, used in the future or can you address that, please?
Yeah, as, as of today, there are no current plans to have them reconvene. Um, you know, I may reserve the opportunity to, to pull them back if, if we feel it necessary. Uh, right now, we are looking at, uh, some changes to our plans, but those are really minor changes as we, as we work toward, you know, really the nitty-gritty details. So the task force has really come together and made the major, they've done the major lift in terms of those major decisions. So I don't have any plans at this time to reconvene them, but if that changes, I will let you know.
Um, perhaps, and just a suggestion, correspondence to them to that effect.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that.
All right.
We were actually just discussing that yesterday in our task force and I, that was our recommendation as well. But I appreciate the letter, uh, suggestion. That's a good suggestion.
Okay, all right, thank you. And, um, finally, I sent you guys an email and you should have gotten it just a little bit ago. I waited until the end to send it, uh, regarding the East Lee Education Co-op. And, uh, what I sent you in an email is the agreement. It is not an MOU, it's not a contract. And basically, you will see on there that it has, our group that we've started out here is for the main purpose of dealing with the, the district's, um, strategic plan item of engagement of family and community. And that, as you know, for years has been one of our biggest challenges, not just in one district, but in all of them. We, uh, feel that this, uh, co-op is going to be able to help that situation. And we've already seen, uh, we had a meeting last week and we had, uh, Trey Davis to come and talk. And, uh, we have a meeting today and we're supposed to have, um, HR to talk about some of our, uh, hiring practices and, and all of that and how to make the area more attracted, uh, attracting to, uh, employees and teachers. Because one of the persons on the board mentioned that it was kind of a revolving door that staff comes out here, is almost an, an opportunity to get your feet wet in the district and then you go to a more desirable location. So those are some of the things that we're talking about. We're talking also about, um, how to communicate to our community, especially now with all of the, the COVID things and all of the, um, aspects of things that are going on out here. So I will keep updated on it. I did speak with, um, Attorney Dupree Bruno about the agreement and that it is, she determined as well. And you may want to just go ahead and say, uh, Attorney, what you had, um, mentioned.
So my recommendation is because this is not an actual entity, the board is not really able to, um, enter into any type of contractual relationship, um, I would recommend that the board just give a consensus that approves that we kind of move forward with this project so that Ms. Gittens can be the liaison for the board with regards to this project. Even though we really can't do an MOU or anything like that, these are just citizens getting together. They have a common interest to support the district and work with the district to assist in the East Zone.
Okay, and so if there are any questions, I would answer them. Otherwise, um, uh, Ms., um, the Chair Fisher, if you can ask for consensus after the questions.
Yes, I had a comment from Ms. Morgan first and then we'll do this and then try to get back on track.
Okay, my apologies. I haven't seen this, so I can't provide, uh, I can't provide a comment one way or the other. So maybe I missed something. I thought I checked my email this morning, but my apologies.
No, no problems. Okay, so, so that being said, um, I have, um, uh, a suggestion that we have an opportunity to review that, um, email and the information contained therein. And then we will, uh, move this consensus, uh, request to our ne- next week's workshop, if that's okay with everybody else. Now, I want to get us back on track. So, um, uh, we're at good of the order and Mrs. Giovinelli had started and her first thing was graduations. That got into a big conversation. It is 12:38 and I want for us to try to, uh, end on time because I know people have other commitments. So Mrs. Giovinelli, do you have anything else for good of the order?
Well, actually, I just wanted to finish because I still had a couple of questions. Like, you know, how is the liability any different from Hertz to having it in the stadium? And how did Verro get the, uh, health department's permission? So there's some questions that I feel is unanswered for the community. Um, I'm, like I said, I'm disappointed because I think it's opportunity. So I, I'm sure it's safe to say that at this point, we will not be starting school on time. And I just wanted to go on record that I brought this back up for a conversation between the board. I wasn't making it a, a, a private, um, uh, as it was, as Mrs. Morgan had, was trying to say. I wasn't making it a private, um, request. It was for, uh, the board to have a discussion and I gave it back to the superintendent to, um, and I think that, that, that is in my role as a super school board member to be able to do what's best for students. So that's, I just wanted to clear that up. But I, you know, you've been on the board longer than I have, so I just wanted to make sure that we are on the same page and understanding. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bruno.
So just to clarify and to make sure that the public is, um, aware, with regards to Hertz, uh, the CDC, the, um, DOH, uh, basically advised that we could not move forward with the graduation because it was too large of a gathering. And Hertz actually also contacted us and said they were not moving forward with it because it was too large of a gathering. So that is what the concern is, is how large the gathering is. And, um, that's where the liability comes in. If we go against what is recommended by the health department and what is recommended by the CDC. I can't answer what, um, the other school is doing. I can just talk about, you know, what our exposure is with regards to liability. And then the only other thing that I would add is that Ms. Giovinelli is correct, that if a board member does have a concern that they would like for the superintendent to take a look at, they are, they are, they have that opportunity to do so. And that is the right process, is to send him an email and say, this is something I would like to you to look at. And then he comes back to the board and says, well, this is what I have found and this is my recommendation.
Thank you very much. Anything?
Yeah, and I'll end it real quick. I just think it's fair to say that I am disappointed. So, you know, and so, and I am passionate about what is good for students and families. And graduation was really important. So, um, I'm, you know, I'm hopeful that this, uh, the numbers can go down and we might be able to still do a graduation in the stadium in August. I'm not going to give up hope yet. So, thank you.
Well, I, you know, I think we're all disappointed, but we are in a public health crisis and I think we need to be prudent and do what is best for the health and safety of this entire community. And, you know, we, we will move forward from that. Okay, thank you. So then next on my list would be Ms. Patrica. Are you with us on the phone?
Madam Chair, I just have, I, I am here. Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. I just have two quick comments. The first is for Ms. Gittens. Um, I am really excited about, um, you creating a work group of sorts out, um, out east. And you have my 100% complete total full support. Um, I'd like to, you know, at some point, if you run it, you have questions or you, you run into, um, bumps in the road, um, perhaps I dealt with the same issues in Astero and I can offer some, some guidance on how we over, overcame those obstacles. Um, so I just want to, you know, not have been read the agreement. Um, I understand, you know, um, Ms. Fisher's guidance in terms of approving it at our next meeting. Um, but I want you to know that, that I have, um, 100% support for what you're doing and I really, really appreciate your efforts. That's the first thing. The second thing is, Dr. Atkins, I appreciate, um, your, uh, looking at the start date because I think there's, um, there's been a lot of talk about that out in the community. And it's going to further give confidence to our community that, that you're really looking at every single issue that's coming up and deliberating on it very carefully, um, to make sure that we're hoping in the safest way possible. So, thank you very much, not only for considering it, but for bringing it up today for public consumption. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you and travel safely. Okay, next, um, Ms. Jordan.
Okay, thank you. I, I just wanted to say, um, piggybacking on Ms. Giovinelli, um, as soon as we heard in the community that, um, Bishop Verro was having a graduation, the telephone started ringing, emails started coming. So of course, and even as she said, the county commissioners, the city council people, and being here locally downtown, we have the opportunity to run into these people at Publix or wherever. So you have, they have conversations with you. So that's where that offer came from, to give the green light for all of the schools to, um, to utilize the city of Palms whenever we needed to do that. So I just wanted to, to let you know. And I personally did send, um, Dr. Atkins a, an email regarding this as well because when I was looking at the logistics of that, trying to figure all that out, not knowing, you know, that we were going to push back the, the school start date, which I'm really thankful for, but just trying to bring some kind of hope to these parents who are now concerned where they had, um, the drive-through now for their children who have not been able to even ask that off. So they're not going to, a, a lot of them may not even be able to participate in that now. So it's just, you know, you just feel heart-wrenched with that. It's like, what is the, I, I know it's not our fault, it's nobody's fault that this is taking place. And I know everybody really feels bad about this, but it really does, you know, you can't, there's no words to even express to the parents and these students of, you know, how bad you feel. So of course, when you see these opportunities, you know, come up where you can utilize the stadium, you can do whatever you want on there, it's yours, green light. It's like, oh, okay, great, we can put people out 10 feet apart, 20 feet apart, whatever it takes to make it happen. But, um, so I just wanted to, to put that out. There wasn't just, um, Ms. There wasn't just, um, Ms. Giovinelli. We all speak to the same people. So I, I just wanted to allow, um, I didn't want people to think it was, you know, she's going off and on this rampage. Everybody does care about what the best thing is for the students. And, um, and Ms. Gittens, I think that's great. I really would like to read what you've done because I think that that's something that we could do across the, the, the county. You know, with your leadership and, uh, Ms. Patrica, you know, helping with all of that and trying to make the community, you know, work together better. I think that's a, a great, uh, opportunity for all of us. Um, and so I do look forward to, uh, reading that. I had not had an opportunity to read it yet. And, you know, I just thank everybody, you know, for what they're doing. And again, you know, I do feel for the, um, the students and their families. So that's all my comments for today.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jordan, Ms. Vaughn.
Yeah, um, first, would also like to say I'm happy that, um, Dr. Atkins and his, um, executive staff will be looking at possibly pushing back our start date for school by two to three weeks. Um, just listening to budget presentation today and, um, especially, um, talking with Dr. Pruitt and all of these, all of these things. There are just, um, teachers are, are on the present calendar. Teachers would be back, um, in less than three weeks. And they have, I know, a myriad of questions. And so no matter how we open, if, you know, if, um, hopefully the curve will start to go down. But, uh, right now that trajectory is in the opposite direction. And, um, as one of the, um, at-risk populations due to age, um, that really pains me to have to say that. But, uh, I have company on the board with, with the same thing about age. Um, you know, I, I can totally understand all the, the, the comments that, uh, I've, I've received from, from teachers. And, um, so I, I would hate to go back and have a myriad of questions that, um, that people still have. I, I think the communication piece is so important. And, um, you know, who, who knows what's going to happen with that trajectory? We can only pray that, um, people start doing a better job of staying home. And that even though we don't have mask mandates from any of our major local government, uh, entities. I'm just going to pause there and not say anything editorial. You can see how I'm feeling about it. Um, that people realize that in not wearing a mask and in insisting on going out, um, we, we are, as, as a community, we are, um, the ones that are endangering, um, our own students and, and faculty and support people. And in doing that, endangering the whole community. Um, so, so anyway, I'm, I'm glad we're going to be looking at possibly pushing back that start date. I, I do support that. And again, no matter how it turns out that, that we open, um, depending on that, that curve. Um, one of our board members this week wrote a letter, um, copied the entire board with the do not respond about, um, starting, going away from, um, these virtual meetings. Um, she mentioned that, and I, I don't know if this is true or not, that we're the only government entity that is still doing virtual. I just, I know we are cleared, I believe. And, um, I did write to, um, Mr. Dupree Bruno and she said, we are cleared through the end of July. Is there anything that, um, I, I was curious about the board, um, the appetite to go, to go back if our numbers in Lee County are still sky high. Um, and also the consideration that, um, more than half of us, four, four of us are, um, well above, let's say, the 65. Yeah, or even 70? 70. Four of us. So, um, Mr. Dupree Bruno, could you weigh in a little bit on virtual versus, um, in-person? And, um, whether our, our age has anything to do with, um, a decision?
Well, I, I will say that the executive order from the governor does allow us to continue with the virtual meetings until July 31st. Um, after that, we will see what we can do. Uh, he has extended as well the emergency till September 7th. So I'm assuming that he's probably going to extend this virtual meetings as well. But we will see, um, how that comes down since we are also required to open up schools. So, uh, we'll have to see. Um, with regards to what we are able to do here, we are not able to do a hybrid model where we have some members on Zoom and some members in the boardroom because of sound issues. So the only way that we can proceed is to move forward with, um, if the board members do not want to come into the boardroom, is to proceed with the Zoom meetings the way that we are at the location that you desire. Um, the guidelines indicate that those who are 65 and older or have, um, some type of cormodities have to be very careful with the exposure to the virus. So I think this is what some of the board members are taking into consideration is that they may meet that criteria and they're trying to use as much precaution as possible. Especially with the numbers are the way that they are in Lee County and how they are spiking. So at this time, it's my recommendation that board members do what they feel is comfortable and is in for their own personal, uh, safety and health risk given their, um, their criterias. I will say that this is the same thing that the district is going to be using for employees who are 65 and older or have, um, some type of, um, health challenge that falls within the CDC guidelines. I think a lot of employers are giving way for that. So, um, that will be my recommendation that we continue the way that we are until July 31st and wait for the governor's, um, executive order that addresses that in the future.
Thank you very, and, and that's, yeah, that's really all I had to say. But since it was brought up, I, I was just curious because I, I, I know that, um, I've been operating under an abundance of, of caution and really curtailing almost everywhere I, I go. Um, but as long as I would be able to participate, but I'm assuming that if it's not under the governor's order, that, um, for an action meeting, a call-in would not represent vote. Would that probably be true?
If, excuse me, if we, um, if once the order expires, then we go back to our regular board policy with, and also the statutory requirements, but which, which require us to have a physical quorum. So we will have to have at least four members in the boardroom to be able to move forward. If there are legitimate reasons for you not being able to appear, you can appear by, um, phone is what our policies allow.
But only if it's work-related can we, um, at an action meeting actually vote?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question. It's my.
That, that, um, that if, if we are absent in calling in and the absence is work-related, that we are, um, able to vote. But if it's illness or of, of other family obligation, that we can, um, comment, but we're not officially, um, able to vote. That was, actually, I've never missed a meeting, a total meeting. So I'm, I'm not sure, but I think that's the way it goes, isn't it?
So let me pull up the board policy specifically and I will tell you exactly what it says.
Haven't some of the other board members had this as, you know, like vacation or, um, family obligation versus being absent or work-related? Is, is anybody had experienced with?
Ms. Vaughn and Madam Chair, pursuant to Board Policy 1.11 subsection 2C, members may participate and vote by use of an interactive video and/or telephone system to allow a physically absent member of the board to attend the meeting in those instances where the board member is confined to home or hospital due to illness or accident. So I would think that, um, this health crisis that we are experiencing would qualify for board members.
So by extension, even if you're not ill with COVID, if, if you're?
Due to the exposure.
If, if you're not wanting the exposure because of, let's say, age, that you could be able to vote.
Cause that, that is part of the CDC guidelines. Now, I will say that once the governor's order expires, we will need to have a quorum, a physical quorum in order to conduct business.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you very much. Mrs. Morgan?
I have nothing.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have just a few things. First of all, I want to say thanks to the board members for asking, uh, many of the questions that I would have asked today. And I want to thank the superintendent and his staff for the continued work, uh, not only in planning for, uh, the reopening of schools, but the communication with our, um, teachers and staff, uh, regarding the preparation for reopening. Um, I concur with some of the other board members that, um, I think it's, um, prudent for us to delay the reopening of school until we're sure that everybody knows exactly what to expect and what to do. And also that, that we are safer in our community. As we work with our community, um, I had an opportunity to attend a Healthy Lee Coalition meeting yesterday by Zoom, or by a WebEx actually. And so there were a couple of issues that were brought up. And, um, Heather Parker from the Wellness and myself were attending. And so, um, the census count, and I think I sent an email regarding this, the census count in Lee County is still at 51%. So we really need to try with our captive audience and our communication, uh, opportunities to get, um, the, um, get people to come up, come on and, uh, fill out their census. So Lee Health is providing us with copies of their flyers in English, Spanish and Creole for distribution, if we can do that. And so I'm, I'm here to ask if that's something, um, that the superintendent thinks that we can help with. And then regarding difficult-to-reach population, they talked a lot about that. And so I mentioned that I had, um, Ms. Gittens had already been, uh, talking about how are we going to reach those people who are hard to communicate with? And so I asked, um, Ms. Gittens if she would, with some of the information she has gathered thus far, would be able to help that committee in, in, um, formulating ideas and plans and how to get ahold of people who are in those difficult-to-reach areas. Uh, I've also been, um, asked to participate in the Behavioral Health Test Task Force. And they are, um, working on something called Pre- Preparing for the Behavioral Health Surge. So they have some kits that need to be distributed. And I had suggested that I could ask if we, uh, could use our grab-and-go sites. And I did have an opportunity to talk a little bit with Ms. Stillwell about this, uh, to help them distribute that information to those people who may not, um, be able to get them, uh, readily. So, uh, one of the things that I'm concerned about and, and happy that we're taking a little bit more time to prepare for the reopening is, I think that we need to take a look at the, uh, mental and emotional status of our students and staff when we come back in because they may not be ready to learn, you know, uh, or get right on to standard X, Y and Z. But I think we have to be sure that they are, um, i- in a healthy enough status emotionally to be able to participate. So, uh, I will send an email following this meeting with all of the other details about the communication and the Behavioral Health Task Force and partnering with our folks at Lee Health and Sal's Care and United Way, um, 211. And so I think just stay well, stay safe, be cautious. And, uh, you know, even if you're not old like some of us on the board, take it easy anyway because we really want for our community to be safe and flatten the curve and be ready to try to resume some sort of a new normal. Uh, with that, I see that Ms. Gittens has her hand up. And then I'll move on to Ms. Bruno and Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, just very quickly, um, and, and thank you for what you just said, Ms. Fisher. It reminds me of Maslow's hierarchy needs. If you're hungry or cold or don't have your, your creature comforts, you cannot learn. Um, and one of the.
Excuse me, I just wanted to say that one of, one of the things that they've noticed is that since this pandemic, uh, shutdown, they have had a dramatic increase in, um, uh, domestic violence and child abuse calls, uh, enforcement agencies. And, oh, there's a big concern about that, that we have people who have been traumatized in some way and are going to need additional support. And so that was one of the reasons for this, um, preparing for the health, behavioral health surge.
Well, and then you add to that the, um, uh, like the Black Lives Matters and all of the issues that are going on. We have children that are afraid of, of everything. I mean, we may have to start at square one with some of the younger students and with the SRO, uh, you know, collaboration and, and, um, you know, understanding that, that, uh, that, um, you know, cooperating with the SROs and all of that. And, and just, there's a lot for children to deal with right now. The last thing I wanted to say too is, um, uh, to Dr. Atkins, a lot of questions have come out and continue to come out about waivers. Who has to sign a waiver for what? Um, for the sports, there was one. The teachers are saying, do they have to? The parents are asking, do they have to? So I'm just, I'm just giving a heads up that on the, the town hall this afternoon, you, you will get a lot of questions about waivers. And if we can get, um, thank you to Lauren for giving us updates and answers to those questions so that as we are talking to people, we do have the most up-to-date answers. We appreciate that. And if you could give us an answer to that one, that's a biggie right now. And thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Bruno, any comments for the good of the order?
I just wanted to let the board members know that the, um, email that was sent by Ms. Gittens with the letter, I have had an opportunity to review it. And so I think that it's, um, perfectly fine. So I wanted the, the board members to know that. And then another thing that, um, I have the opportunity to, um, watch Dr. Atkins and his staff at work, um, being here every day and kind of seeing everything that goes on. And I want the board members to know that, um, during. goes on. And I want the board members to know that during the team meetings, when they are going through the pandemic and trying to figure out how to do this and how to do that, they are extremely meticulous and work very, very diligently. All of the members of his team that is working on the pandemic. And as you guys can imagine, it is a humongous, humongous job, very, very difficult job. So I, I want to let you know that I was there yesterday. I saw it for myself, and that they're, they really are on top of things and making sure that we move forward. And I'm going to just kind of send some kudos also to Dr. Atkins, because he's kind of leading the charge on this. And it's, and it's just enormous. There's just no win on any of this. So we're in good shape in Lee County. We're moving forward in the right direction. And I wanted the board members to know that.
Thank you very much for those comments. Is there anything else? Ms. Bruno? Okay, Dr. Atkins, and then Ms. Javonelli has another question.
I'm sure you can go ahead.
All right, Ms. Javonelli, go ahead.
Yeah, actually, it's to Dr. Atkins, and he might be able to answer this, is regarding the diplomas. Will they, will they be mailed? Because Mr. Simmons said that they would be mailed, but the students are getting different, conflicting information. So if you could just clarify that, I think it's important. And thank you, Ms. Jordan, for helping me champion the graduations. Thank you.
And we'll get your response. And I know that when the question came up earlier about the diplomas that, that we will get, Lauren is checking on it now, and will get us an answer on the mailing issue. So I do appreciate, appreciate the comments and, and the discussion today. I know everyone felt very passionate about the, about the graduation. And, and, you know, I do believe that, you know, board members can really do put kids first. And so I understand, understand all the efforts that have gone into trying to work something out. Relative to the opening, you know, I think that, as I said, July 20th was the decision, but I think we can be pretty confident, you know, obviously, we're going to move that opening. But, you know, I think the calendar committee is going to provide us, you know, a really good indication in terms of what that date would be, whether it be something like the 24th or the, or the 31st. So if the community could just stay tuned for that particular date, but understand that that is something the calendar committee is going to be looking at on Monday. So we're going to get you that information as quickly as possible. One thing that, that I do want to make people aware is that, you know, board members, you may start to get questions about compensation and so forth, about pushing a date. One of the things that, that we are definitely looking at, obviously, is about employee compensation and all that. Fortunately, we do have a little bit of flexibility here because we currently pay in arrears. So because of that, you know, we do have a little bit of a, a date to, or opportunity maybe to continue to, to make that August 31st paycheck date, even if we're going to push that date. So I know, you know, teachers out there, in particular, and some of our support staff that don't have a, a contract that goes through the, you know, 255-day contract, but have something that's less of a contract, you know, toward the end of the summer, it can get pretty tight at the house. And the, the committee that's working on this definitely has that in the forefront of their mind. So that, that, I just want to reassure people there. We can't, there are certain things we're not able to do under the law, but believe me, we will do everything that we can. And that pay in arrears does give us a little bit of flexibility. So that's very important. I do want to make board members aware that, that because we have all these reopening plans that have to take place, particularly in our schools, that we are asking that our employees in those schools, the 216-day contract employees will be, those, those employees will be coming back to work. They were scheduled to come back to work on Monday. We will continue on with those plans because you think about at a, at a, at a large school, with all of the, the, the systems that have to be put in place, you know, our principals are going to need really kind of an all hands on deck. However, having said that, as was indicated earlier, we are taking a very cautious approach as it relates to employees that, that fall into over 65, medically fragile, and we're going to provide a lot of flexibility there. So even though I'm saying 216 is starting back, you know, if, if somebody falls into one of those categories, we're going to be very compassionate in terms of how we handle, how, how we handle those employees and their situations. And, and there are other situations out there as well. You know, I live with a medically fragile person and all that. So it's, it's going to be something that we're going to have to look at case by case. We're also looking at, for the same reason, setting a good example down here of, of this building as well. We have 255-day employees, and you can't ask our school base to go back and not be asking employees here to go back. But here, it's a very tight building. And so we're asking our divisional leaders to look at how we want to do things within this building, potentially staggered schedules and things like that. So, so that's for 255-day employees or 216 employees, people who are currently under contract. So we'll provide you more information, but I wanted you to be aware that those plans are currently in action. Also, with 216-day, this is important, we do have some assistant principals that are coming up for board approval after Monday's date, that, remember, with school-based employees, like teachers and, and those administrators, we do have some of them that do start sometimes before the board approval. That is a current practice. We do not do that for district staff, like a district administrator, they have to wait on that final board approval. A principal has to wait on that final board approval. But other school-based staff, we do go ahead and allow them to at least start prior to board approval. And if you can imagine, if schools had to wait, you know, as, as you have a start of school approaching rapidly, had to wait until board approval, they wouldn't be able to start as, as they, with everybody that they need. So that is something that we have done, but I wanted to make you aware we are doing that. Finally, Ms. Gittens brought up the question about waivers. And I can't speak right now to the athletic waivers, but I, we can certainly do that. I appreciate the heads up. We did make a decision yesterday in that pandemic team meeting that we would no longer ask for those waivers of those employees that were 65 and older. I think there was a lot of confusion about that, and that you all have had a lot of questions about it. And we felt, at this point, everybody's aware of what the governor's executive order is. And, you know, you're making the, the decision. So why we, why do we need to ask for that waiver? So we're not going to do that at this time. So I believe that's all that I had to cover. Other, I just, just again, encourage people to stay tuned. We do have the Facebook event later today, and we will continue to provide a lot of communication out there to our community, because I know there's going to be a lot of questions as we move forward. So thank you. That's all my comments.
Okay, thank you very much. And board members, thank you. Stay safe. And seeing no other business, this workshop is concluded. God bless.